Good morning, everyone. We are pleased to begin this -- pleased to begin this work session on advisory questions to be placed on the ballot. Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence afterwards?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'd like to make an opening comment. I realize that there is -- there's a fair amount of anxiety and disagreement about the concept of putting questions forward for the voters to answer, whether they prefer one thing or another. There has been, on Tuesday's meeting here, there was no lack of disruption in this room. It was inappropriate, it was disrespectful, and it will not be regarded today. So what I'm asking for is for everyone to, number one, hold your gasps, your outcry, your comments in the room because it distracts from the process of the meeting, okay? Our objective here is to arrive at a decision, not to hear inappropriate comments from the room. If you have a comment, please step up to the microphone at the appropriate moment and make your comment. We want to hear everybody's voice. The intention here is not to quell anybody's voice, okay? That's the first thing. The second thing is, there was a lot of misunderstanding over all of these issues, particularly of particular concern in what I mentioned right now is the idea of switching the county clerk to an appointed rather than elected position. That was widely perceived as some kind of a power grab. Absolutely was not the intention at all. So, you know, I don't want to allow such an idea to be -- continue to be promulgated in error, and so I've decided to jettison that one. It's not a point of contention that we need to raise, and I really, you know, I hope that everyone in this room, I know a lot of you, I see some of your faces out here looking at me with hate and disdain. I see it, okay? And that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, Eldon. I appreciate your agreement there. That's the first time you've ever agreed with me. But, you know, look, I don't hate any of you, okay? And honestly, if you would take 15 minutes to sit down with me in my office and talk to me and hear my heart, you'd have a better understanding of who I am, so, you know, whatever. I don't want to be the focus of this. I want these questions to be the focus of this, and it's my view that putting a question out in a neutral, unbiased language for people to answer the question is part of the democratic process, and I hope that everyone in the room would agree with that. In the original texts that I put out, we considered on Tuesday, we tabled them because of legal counsel advising that the language was not unbiased. I agree, it was not unbiased. Turns out, you know, I do have a bent, as all of us do. So I've revised this language, and we may actually have to consider further revisions today. If we do, then that's fine. I'm committed to having the democratic process moved forward by the voters of Coos County, having an opportunity to simply answer advisory questions. There is no legal weight behind these, none. All these are is, "What do you think?", okay? And anyone in this room who is opposed to allowing people the opportunity to answer a simple question, frankly, you know, needs some re-education. So here's, so I'd like to open this up with a -- we're going to deal with these one at a time, and since we don't have copies of the revised text, now, they were up on the county website. If some of you have them, great, I appreciate that, and kudos on your homework. For those of you who did not, we're going to share my screen up there, and I don't know if we can make that any bigger, Bobby, can we? So that people can actually see it, and then I'll be able to scroll down.
I think since you're presenter, you have to do that.
Well, I'm full screen already, so I don't know how to make it bigger on the go-to over there.
We don't know that we can.
All right, so this is going to be what we're limited to, and if you want to see these and you can't see them, I'm sorry, but we will read through each of them, dealing one at a time, okay? So, do either of you commissioners have any opening comments before we get into the meat of this?
I do.
Please, Commissioner Sweet.
First, I'd like a word from legal counsel. Do you have any thoughts on -- I just got these, and I haven't had a lot of time to read them.
I think I have some.
I'm going to read about setting the -- let me go ahead just for a moment, and then perhaps you could chime in. I worry, I wonder why these things should be county business. I know these are important issues, very important, concerning to all of us. I'm not sure I want to set the precedent that the county would be the venue through which all of us could weigh in on concerns we have about things that happen at the state and things that happened. Firstly, you know, I'd love to know why we're not teaching phonics in the school. We just got word that our state is lagging behind again in reading and math. I don't know about math, but, you know, phonics works. Why wouldn't I ask for something like that? Or I'm concerned about Ukraine. What's my Republican Party doing to that country? Those things concern me. But I don't think this county is the venue through which to address those concerns. Now, it does take county resources to do this, and one thing I really agree is Rod. He said, "If you knew me, you wouldn't think I'm bad." And I've got to know him, and he's good. I just, we just don't always agree.
But we disagree agreeably.
Well, you just told me, except for the fact that you told me that if I disagreed with putting this forward, that that would not be, I would not be a good person. So that wasn't very good.
All right, I don't think those were my exact words.
Well, no, exact words, but that was the sentiment, and I don't hold that against you very much. So, and the other thing is, our county's plate is full. I don't know of any department in this county that isn't overwhelmed at the moment. A lot of it is due to our financial constraints. We have, used to have a county council and an assistant and a legal secretary. Our one legal secretary is out sick. We can only afford one county council. Our road department is just overwhelmed with the amount of damage we've had from rain, ongoing rain. It's just throughout the county, and we all know that our public safety system is overwhelmed. And we know that we have before us a very, very crucial decision regarding funding of public safety. The county is not able to provide the resources we need to have adequate prosecution capability and jail space to be a deterrent to crime. That is before us. We don't need a lot of distractions, and these are great questions. These are important things, but I don't think this is the time and place for this. And I don't want to set a precedent. I've already said that. So with that, I think there's some technical questions that need to be addressed. I'd like to hear from county council, your concerns. You mentioned to me that you had a few, and again, I think I got a glance at this yesterday, but I don't know. I think county council had had a chance to look at this before, between now and then. So this is, it's just another sign of how overwhelmed we are. We're talking about this, it's very important, and it just got put on my desk. So, county council.
But actually, could we offer Commissioner Maine the opportunity to speak up before we defer to council, if he chooses?
So, I disagree with a lot of folks because the wind energy is a county matter. If you don't know, we had multiple hearings here in this room about it, and then we had a night meeting, invited the public to come and comment about it. We had maybe forty-some-odd people at the night meeting. Nobody was in our position at all. If you don't know, some important things about the offshore wind, it'll be out in federal territorial waters. However, we also passed a proclamation against this thing some months ago. We do have jurisdiction when and if the cable does come on shore, okay? If you don't know, in Virginia and Rhode Island, they both have offshore wind. The promoters of offshore wind went to those respective legislatures, and they got a thing called feed-in tariff, like feed cows, feed-in tariff, passed in those legislatures. Apparently, I don't have it in writing, but it has been discussed in our Oregon legislature a couple of times. Simply put, and it's very complicated, feed-in tariff means that if something happens to the multi-billion dollar project out there in the ocean, we, you and I, are on the hook for making the investors whole in our rate structure. Can you imagine if your power bill goes up ten, fifteen, twenty times? And then what else will happen? The low-income folks will have to have assistance, so we'll have to pay for that, too. So, and if you don't know, many, if not almost all of the windmills are coming from China, as well as the solar panels. So for that, I'm not real happy with having this project out there, especially when it affects our fishing industry and our local fishermen. I do see a problem right off, and this is the first time I've seen these, but the first one on the offshore wind says, "Should Coos County work to oppose?" I would phrase it differently, "Should Coos County support or oppose the installation?" So there's a, it says that in the body, but it doesn't say it in the ballot title. For the other two, it's a statewide issue, and I have a lot of feelings about both, the vote by mail, one of which is that votes can be counted if they come in through the mail after seven days of the election.
With no postmark.
With, yeah, and then that was added, "With no postmark." So I'm going, wait a second, shouldn't they have been mailed on or before the date of the election? Oh, wait a second, that doesn't feel good to me. The other one, voucher system, you probably all know that now there are no requirements to graduate from Oregon high schools. Why is that? I can speculate that the stats are so bad and so low about graduation rates that if you remove the requirements to graduate, the stats go up. Just some of my personal thoughts about it. Thank you.
All right. Counselor, thank you for your way there.
This is your guys' meeting. I just would frame today's meeting as an opportunity for the three of you, as you've already started to do, to discuss the idea of whether to put forward any of these three advisory questions. I know this, as Commissioner Sweet alluded to, there's questions of time and resources, and, you know, whether it's a county matter or not, and so I think those are good conversations to have. I know Julie Breckie, clerk, is here to discuss, she could chime in on cost of putting forward an advisory question, if you ask her to do so. When it comes to, you know, the technicalities, I mean, if, I'd say if you decide today that you're interested in one, two, or three of these advisory questions, that we set aside time for an executive session to discuss any further legal concerns that I may have with the language, we can discuss that, and then reach a final decision on whether to move forward with any of them.
Very good. Thank you very much. So without further ado then, I'd like to go ahead and get into the meat, one by one. Actually, first, I want to speak to the question of propriety and effectiveness of posing these questions at the county level. First of all, the county level is the only level where you all can walk into our office and engage us pretty much any time. If we're in there, we'll see you. And county level is the only level where that public and community engagement facilitates the insertion of questions like these, or any other questions that are deemed to have a substantial body of support, enough to perhaps justify putting the question out to the voters. And the purpose for putting the questions out is not because the county can actually do anything about these necessarily. The offshore wind, we have a little bit more sway than on the others, but certainly, when working with other commissioners, with state agencies, with other elected officials, we do have an influential voice and can access certain avenues of effective participation to have some influence on these issues at a statewide level. Okay, so that's the purpose. I mean, obviously, our first job is to run the county, but these things are very important societally as well, and county government is the foundational level of community government. I mean, this is where it all starts, folks, and so I appreciate you all being here for that reason as well. Okay. The first one up, let's discuss the offshore wind project advisory vote. That is the title of this question, offshore wind project advisory vote. And I am, actually, you know what? Let me see if I can zoom this a little bit more. Let's see, can I zoom in Adobe, Darris?
You can walk over and read it.
You can walk over and read it, yeah. It might be a little less disruptive if I can blow it up, but I don't know exactly how to do that. Here, let's see, oh, wait, hold on, I might have it. No, I'm not seeing it. All right. Okay, so we'll just have to run with it as it is. I hope you brought your binoculars. So the offshore wind project advisory vote is the title. The caption, the proposed caption that would go on the ballot is, "Advisory vote, whether to oppose offshore floating wind energy project." And I momentarily want to speak to a point that Commissioner Maine made, that he'd like to see it, should we oppose or not? Well, that's not a yes or no question, and a ballot question has to be a yes or no question. So, yeah, there's, should we oppose or support?
If you say, "Should oppose or support," which is a yes or no question.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, maybe we can structure the ballot so that...
We'll put yes for oppose or yes for support.
The yes vote means blah blah, a no vote means, and you can handle that.
Right, so that's the way it's constructed. Thank you, Abigail. It is constructed as a yes/no, rather than a either/or. So I suppose we could structure it the other way. If I'm incorrect in that, then I'm sure that the clerk would let me know that.
Or counsel.
Or counsel, yes. I see you, sir. Can you hang on just one moment, because I want to get through the reading of it, and then we'll get to you. All right, so the question is, "Should Coos County work to oppose installation of a 95-square-mile deep-water-floating wind farm off our coast?" Very simple. I hope that my summary statement has been neutralized significantly. My intention was to have it absolutely down the middle. This is an advisory vote. Here, I'll scroll this down so everybody can see it at the same time I'm reading it. There it is.
Excuse me, I was online, I'm trying to figure out where that has been posted, and we're not typing it online. They need to direct me to that so that people can load up on our phone.
Well, I...
Was there a...
Oh.
We didn't find the meeting.
So...
I never got them until just now, so I didn't...
You didn't post them, okay. Well, that would be on me to have not sent them to you, so you're right, Julie, they're not there, but we will certainly, we'll certainly, can we put them up post facto?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, so they'll go up immediately after the meeting, as they were written.
Back to that yes or no vote.
So, sir, can we, I'd like to actually read through this, and then...
People are jumping in, so...
Yes, they are, so...
I have my hand up, okay.
You do, thank you, okay. This is an advisory vote to determine public opinion. A yes vote means you want Coos County to oppose the offshore wind energy project, and a no vote means you do not want Coos County to oppose it. The U.S. Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, BOAM, is seeking to lease out ocean areas for floating wind farms with transmission cables back to shore. These areas are about 95 square miles, or 61,000 acres of ocean area, 30 to 50 miles off the coast of Douglas and Coos Counties, and 209 square miles, or 133,000 acres, 18 to 24 miles off the coast of Curry County. This advisory vote will inform the Coos County Commissioners of the broader will of the people and help to determine whether or not the voting public wishes for the commissioners to allocate time or resources to opposing the project. So I hope that's pretty neutral. Okay, with that, can we please now go ahead and open to comment and discussion?
Would you like a motion before we have comment? There's no comment until you have a motion. I think that is the procedure.
Well, it is normally, although that wasn't the procedure in last night's work session. So if you want to re-engage that procedure today, then I'm perfectly...
We didn't have a motion. Yes, I...
I'm perfectly happy to entertain that. So do I have a motion in order to get...
I'm going to put a motion up so we have discussion.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me. There, sir.
Yeah.
I'd like to put forth a motion to open the discussion.
Very good.
You're supposed to do that, because you have nothing to discuss if you don't have a motion.
Moving doesn't mean you're in favor of it necessarily.
What?
I'm seconding for the discussion.
All right.
So, I haven't, I haven't made a motion yet.
He just said he was going to.
I thought you did.
No, you didn't. I mean, no, I didn't. I move, we oppose putting this advisory ballot title forward.
All right. I don't know if you're going to get a second on that, so that's not probably going to open it, so...
That's fine.
All right.
I'm going to make a motion to discuss the ballot title.
All right, I'll second that motion for discussion, and that opens it for discussion. All right, let's invert the process and have the public speak first, and then we'll have some commissioner discussion after that. You are first, sir. Please step, when you're going to speak, please step up to the podium. We need your name and your place of residence for the record.
My name is John Ezra Sharmine, and I live in Northland, Oregon. And just a quick thing back to the yes or no for the oppose or support. If you go with a oppose, and yes is impose, that creates a double negative situation, which is confusing to the voters, and it's biased. The question is yes or no, do you support the offshore? If they don't support it, they vote no. Don't is no, yes is support. It's really clear and simple, nobody gets it wrong.
Okay, I appreciate that, and please remain for a moment, because I'd like to discuss this with you for just a moment, because I have a point. If this question were posed as, "Do you want the Coos County Commissioners to support the offshore wind energy project?" That does not answer the question whether people wish us to actively oppose it or not.
Well, that, the no vote would allow people to do that, and switching them around is confusing. And you have elderly voters, and you have young voters, and you see this on the internet all the time, and it's best to keep things simple and straightforward. I taught digital logic in college, and I was the guy that walked in and fixed equations on the board on my way through, and you know the rate. You don't want to screw with the logic of the situation, and if you create what's called a double negative, where voting yes means no, and voting no means yes, it confuses people guaranteed. And if you want to oppose, what, when I was looking at the ballot, mailing ballot that people like in Oregon, it said, for county commissioners, it says nonpartisan, nonpartisan. We have state representatives that are partisan. Now there, if you want to oppose something, you go to the state representative, it's not the county, it's nonpartisan. The rain damage, the roads, all that's nonpartisan. That's what people want done by the county commissioners. We don't want to jump onto a Q non-bandwagon, or any bandwagon. We don't want LGBTQ to take over the city council either. In either way, we don't, it's nonpartisan. You understand what nonpartisan means. It means if you're anti-science, or you think the elections were stolen by mailing ballots, that's not nonpartisan. And it's going to only slow down and cost money and get in the way of what the county commissioners are supposed to be doing, which is nonpartisan. Thank you.
Thank you. So I know that there is a great emotional draw to applaud, all right? I know it's very strong, because I've been in those seats, I understand. So, but with that said, I would like to say that... So, but with that said, I would, I would like to say that, please withhold your applause, don't, please, it slows everything down, it, just don't. Thank you, Adam Clerk. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. A couple of things. One, I do strongly support putting advisory questions on the ballot. I have concern with whether they are clear to the voter. Because that's my end of it, and I'm gonna get a lot of calls, my staff is gonna get a lot of calls, if the wording is at all misleading. So, I encourage you, when you're writing it, to make sure that no is clear and yes is clear. And I'm sure county council can help you with that process. The other thing I have concern about when misleading the voter is being very clear in the summary what this Board of Commissioners can actually do if they voted yes or no. Because I worry that if we don't do that, people are going to think that we have more authority than we do. And that is not something that I want to push out to the voters. So, just being very clear on what a yes or no means, because that is our time, and time is dollars in our office. And also being very clear on what we actually have the authority at a county level to do. So, what will this look like? Okay?
Those are excellent points, I appreciate that. Can I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
And this is regarding the yes or no versus the multiple choice format.
I would have to, I would have to see it in writing to determine whether it was something that was clear. I have already sent that comment over to our office to look and see if that's been done in the past.
Okay.
So, they're looking into that as we speak.
All right.
And we can talk with county council about that as we move forward.
So, just as a general principle, though, in terms of question structure on a ballot, I mean, is it possible, or do you know if it's possible to, to structure a question like this in such a way? Do you, do you want us to oppose, or do you want us to support?
You mean the one that Bob suggested, where it says a yes or a no?
Well, that wouldn't be a yes or a no, it would have to be two, two, two options.
And that's what I asked about, and, and they're currently looking into that. I want to see if it's been done in the past, because that will give us a better idea of how effective it was.
All right, okay.
Could I get some clarification here?
Yes.
Yeah, I get some clarification. If I am opposed to putting this on the ballot, do I have to move that we put it on the ballot? Or can I move that we do not put it on the ballot?
You...
I'm, I'm, I'm talking about what we do here.
You all can vote on whether it goes to the ballot or not. And if you are opposed to it, as a consensus between the three of you, two, you know, the two of three, then, then it does not have to go to the ballot.
Well, I know that, but my question was, I'm opposed to putting, I, I disagree with you. I don't really like advisory stuff.
Well, I'm not saying whether I like it or not, I'm not here to share an opinion. I'm just saying that it is within the authority.
What's before us today as Commissioners
Yes.
is not whether to vote yes or no for this, if it were on the ballot.
No.
It is whether to put it on the ballot or not to put it on the ballot.
Correct.
And to me, the simplest way, if one of us disagrees that it should be on the ballot, is to say, "I vote, I, I move that we do not put this on the ballot."
Right, you can move to oppose it, correct.
Is that confusing? I, I want, I want to make sure, given all this yes and no discussion, that whatever motion we have is clear to everyone here.
Yeah, the motion isn't on the language today. I don't believe the motion today would just be on whether you even want this to go to the ballot at all.
That's what.
Yeah, yeah.
And Julie. And then...
And then I'd be happy to come up to talk to the other issues when we present them.
Thank you, Julie.
Hold on, you know, I could, Julie, if you'd like, I could weigh in on the yes or no.
Yeah.
The structure of the question.
That would be great.
So, the answer there is in statute, the measure has to be worded so that, quote, "An affirmative response to the question corresponds to an affirmative vote on the measure." So, that concept, once itself, there need to be a yes or no vote, and the language needs to be...
Has to support that.
Yeah, so, so to have a multiple choice wouldn't really work there, because...
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the motion to decide whether we're gonna put this forth
No, I understand.
on the ballot or not.
And that's, that's account, you know, that's, that's board procedure, that's sort of a different issue.
And it definitely can't be multiple choice, but, but the suggestion that Bob gave...
Do you support or oppose, I don't think that works, because it doesn't...
Yeah, so I, I just...
...affirmative vote for the measure, I mean...
Uh, Counselor, could I ask you, if you're able to right now, speak to the question of whether the language as it is in this right now fairly closely comports to the statute?
I mean, if the board would like me to speak about, you know, the, you know, legal sufficiency of the measures, I could do that, though, again, I would stress that maybe we have that conversation.
Yeah.
Session, I mean, I...
Yeah.
I, I would like to comment that I know that wording has been like that in the past, and has caused grave confusion. And I can bring, I can bring forth some of those that, that, that that happened with, I don't have them on hand, but I can, I can supply you with those, because...
I know you're right about that.
Yes.
And absolutely, my, my intention here was to be perfectly crystal clear. That's why I spelled it out in very plain words, but, you know, if, if it's, if it's not clear enough, then maybe we need further revision.
Thank you, and I'll come to speak on that.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, in the back, you've had your hand up a number of times, I'm sorry, please. I see your hand.
Hi, my name's Dale Nengardner, I live in Coos Bay. I have a question for Commissioner Maine. Regarding the wind, you gave a few of your reasons for opposing it, but you used examples from the east coast. So, what I, might I have a two-part question to you, which is, one, is that also happening here, or are you just assuming it will? And two, isn't that the issue we should be fighting, whether we should pay for it, rather than should there be wind power? And I'm wondering why we would throw the baby out with the bathwater. If we find something not working on the east coast, we can fix that here on the west coast. We, why would we just eliminate the entire wind farm to fix one financial problem that that wind farm is causing in Virginia?
Well, there's multiple issues with the wind farm.
Could you speak up, it's really hard to hear you in the back.
I forgot to turn it back on, it was my computer that, I was on Zoom meeting yesterday, and I had the voice on the computer.
The feedback.
Yeah, multiple issues. One, I fear that, um, if the Oregon Legislature votes to do the same thing, then we all would be on the hook for possible extreme increases in our power rates. I don't want to see that happen to our citizens at all.
You said that before. My question for you is what, why not fight that part of it, rather than the wind farm?
Because, because a lot of folks in our Oregon Legislature, and the majority are for this particular issue, and that, there is, the, Washington DC is, has a carrot out there to promote this, in that if you have offshore wind, that wind will then be used possibly for a generation of hydrogen. The promise was to have a multi-billion-dollar hydrogen plant in Oregon, produced by offshore wind in part. The other things that bother me are having offshore wind for our, in, in conflict with our maritime folks, and in, in conflict with our fishing folks.
And do you have evidence to support that concern?
Yes, and I've talked to multiple fishing representatives, Nick Edwards, Susan Chambers, and Heather Mann. She's the west coast representative for many fishing groups about this issue. And it will disrupt the fishermen, and I think there are folks here that would testify on that behalf.
Yeah, that would be really bad. How, how will that happen?
Then also, then also, I've heard from numerous unions about they need the jobs. Well, I read, and I can't find it, I've been trying to find it, those jobs to construct that offshore wind will come from San Francisco, not from here.
There, there's another point that I would like to address on this, and, and you posed the question of east coast versus west coast. The east coast is shallow water, and all of those installations are actually installed on the bottom of the ocean with, you know, concrete bases. On the west coast here, we're talking about installations in water that's between 2,000 and 3,000 feet deep, and possibly even 4,000 on the outer edge. And so, you're talking about a floating platform that's anchored to the bottom and, and secured to the bottom with massive screw apparatus, screwed in right, right where the Cascadia Fault is. And, and, I mean, the sheer technical challenge of, of accomplishing an installation like that, where you've got 5,000 feet of anchor chain off of each corner of a floating platform out there on this Pacific Ocean, is, I mean, it's, it's, seems impossibly difficult and challenging. And then, and then the issue of maintaining those mechanisms out there lends another whole level of complexity.
Do you know we have floating oil platforms? And that when they go bust, they actually ruin the ocean?
I do know that.
So, we do have, it is a technological challenge, which wasn't my question. My question was, why would you throw the baby out with the bathwater? When we created fossil fuels and vehicles that ran on them, the challenges were immense. Everyone kept saying, "Get a horse!" But we figured it out over time, because we needed to, to build our society. I, I'm not here to argue, I'm sorry, I'm...
No, it's fun, it's, it's a dialogue.
But I did want to know why you think that what will happen there will happen here, thank you for your opinion. But also, I don't understand why we're not addressing the real things that we know will go wrong, rather than a whole bunch of future, maybe this could be scary.
So...
Because those are the things that are important. We need the energy, we will run out of the fossil fuels. We do want to keep being a, a major industrial nation, so we do have to do something. And I'm not sure why people are resisting that, instead of focusing on what, let's focus on what could go wrong, rather than just say no to the entire possibility of a better future.
So, a couple of things, you know that these windmills are the giant Cuisinarts of the sky. They destroy everything from butterflies, bees, on up to large...
So, do you have some proof that bees are causing this kind of a problem?
Go out on the internet and look it up, how many birds are actually destroyed. Number two is, we have the endangered Albatross out there. It's because of the design of the windmill blades suck those flying, whatever they are, into the blades, and...
I would need to see some actual peer-reviewed science on that.
All right. Thank you for the comments from the gallery that I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting are not gonna be permitted here today. Okay, next hand up.
Commissioner Taylor, I may make a small suggestion. Go ahead, please. My suggestion would just be, you know, I think if, if we get into discussing the merits or lack thereof of, of wind energy projects, we could be here all day.
And thank you for that, Counselor.
I think we want to limit, limit comment and conversation to whether or not to put it to a public vote, right?
Yeah, this is, and thank you for that point, I thought of that as well, and then momentarily forgot it. Yes, the objective here is not the, the, the pros and cons of wind energy, but putting the question before people to answer, that's simply it. Okay, now, yes, thank you, Teresa.
Teresa Avery, Banden, and I'm just gonna be real short. The, the benefit of putting this on, on an advisory question is so that we can get a feel of what the local people, this is gonna affect us locally. And the whole project was done, basically, we had to really wrangle to even get a voice in it. So, this gives our commissioners' teeth to be able to, as the project is going, if the community soundly votes, "Yeah, let's go for it," or "Let's, I'm against it," that gives the commissioners' teeth to be able to communicate with the powers that be. You know, our community is soundly opposed to this, or soundly behind this, and I, I think it's a great idea. I, I love to have a voice.
Thank you very much, Teresa. We don't know how this vote would go, I have no idea. Yes, ma'am, thank you, saw your hand, yes.
Good morning, Commissioners, Sandra Woodside from Banden, Oregon, so...
Good morning.
One of the things that I find interesting about Oregon is that it's, it's a state that strongly believes in we, the people, participating in the process. And so, the state has developed a variety of processes to be followed to allow that to happen. Correct me if I'm wrong, but when I was wandering around through the laws, I ran across a statement that said on most, most working committees at the state level, there is a subset of representatives of Board of Commissioners, at least three on every committee. So, it seems to me that part of the process, because we have a representative from our board on the committee for the water farm, that our discussions today, our participation in informing you, how we, and we're not representative of the entire county either. So, the input that we have today would be something that Commissioner Maine could then take to the water farm project, to say, "This is where Coos County stands on this." Now, it would seem to me that if this is a project that affects the, in essence, kind of the state, that the state should be doing something about asking us. And so, the correct place for us to be carrying the larger message is to our state representatives through writing campaigns, appearing on their doorstep, the very same thing that we're doing here today. So, please correct me if I'm wrong in my assessment of the layers that we're dealing with in government, because again, I claim I'm a newbie, but I, I think the, I think the discussion is important. I think it affects our future. I think it's a state-funded project, but it's going to suck monies from our county. And so, the discussion today is incredibly important, no matter what side we're on. So, you are our elected representatives, we are here to give you feedback, because you're asking for it. And then, please help us decide which is the appropriate level on which to operate, thank you.
So, a couple little things.
Yes, sir.
It's federally funded, in other words, and not state-funded. And I, for your information, I've already had two meetings at the request of RWE, which is the second-largest wind company in the world from Germany. And they were probing what we kind of, local people thought.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
I, I'd actually like to speak to that just for a moment, too.
Yes, sir.
And that, and that is that you, you accurately pointed out that, you know, this room is not necessarily representative of the county. I wish it were, it would be great if it were, you know, exact demographic example, but it's not. That doesn't diminish our appreciation for your all being here. But, but the idea here is that then this, this puts the question out to every registered voter in the county, which is, you know, I think we would all agree, the best representative example that we have. But I do appreciate your, your comments, thank you.
Then the footnote to that is, if, if there is a vote to put it on the ballot, that as people have already expressed, it'd be, it'd be an unbiased representation, not designed either consciously or unconsciously to sway an opinion.
That's the objective, it really is. Yeah, and, and I have no idea how this vote will come out, you know.
I understand.
May, may come out opposed to my personal views, which then I would honor as the, you know, you, we work for you folks, so... So, you know, we'd have to honor that. I saw the next hand right back there, ma'am, yes.
Good morning. I'm Judy Falkowski at Coos Bay. And this is only my second meeting. And what I know to be for engaging people is that you need trust and respect to be an ally or a healthy opponent. If you don't have that, you're adversarial or a bedfellow. I'm concerned about what's pushing this advisory questions. A week ago today, there was a late addendum with these four questions. It was a three day weekend. The next board, Advisory Board for Commissioners meeting was Tuesday. Then we were told it's all going away, and then as soon as you quit that meeting, here comes again, you're going to have a work session. I don't know what's pushing the urgency. Did this come from the voters? I don't understand because it doesn't look like the communication is good. I'm, I'm questioning the intent. What's pushing this to have, happen in less than a week with no communication?
May I speak to those questions?
Sure, I'd love it.
So the first question is, on last Tuesday's meeting, there was, there was no mention that these issues are going to go away. We tabled them for review and a work session. That was specifically expressed in the meeting, and that's what we agreed to publicly, it's on the recording. So there, and that's, that answers that question. That work session is right now.
What I heard was that it was going to go to legal counsel. Then by the end of the day, it came back. I'm not sure if legal counsel's got there. Doesn't even sound like there's a consensus among you three, whether this should even be a question as far as advisory.
Right, well, there's not always consensus between us.
I understand that.
That's true.
Don't insult me. I understand that. Anyway, I'm just frustrated with the system. And it, and when you talk about your great intent, you're suspicious because of the way you're processing through this. And it's a big talk. And I, I don't understand. I don't understand.
So that was the second point that I wanted to address was the, was the timing. The fact of the matter is that we're, we're under a deadline in order to, to get these on the ballot.
Oh, I did that for May twenty one, I've done some research.
If we want to do that.
My question is, why did you as a commissioner push it so close to the edge last Friday? As a late, as a late addendum on a three day weekend for the next meeting to happen on a Tuesday, and then nothing happened?
Right, I, I understand how that could be concerning, especially if you're starting out with a biased view, but that wasn't, that wasn't the intent at all. So, anyway. I'm sorry, act, sir. Oh, was Arnie next, okay.
Thank you, Arnie Roblin from Coos Bay. I get concerned when people want to ask questions of which there is no outcome that can be helpful. And so from my perspective, be careful what you ask, because it can lead to a lot of other kinds of problems. And I, I concur with John in the fact that I, I don't see that asking this question right now is that important. We've been having this conversation on the coast. I have been in multiple hours of discussions for the past eight years with fishermen up in Newport, with fishermen down here, with people up and down the coast. So there is a, there has been a wealth of knowledge about local interests and why they don't like it or do like it. And I have also looked at it from the other perspective. You know, we used to have mills in Coos Bay. Each one of them had a power plant. Each one of those power plants had a special line that went to our hospitals. So when we had power outages, we had power for the emergencies. We don't have the mills anymore, we don't have the power anymore. There is no power produced on the west side of the, of our little mountains. So that's where the lines go down. All of a sudden, we have no power. This would solve that possible problem at one point. There's a lot of work that has to be done. I will tell you that you need to get behind your federal delegation, because all of them understand now that the process Boeheim has is broken. It doesn't work, it is the wrong thing. That was where the right, the first problem came, it's Boeheim, it's not all these other kinds of stuff. It's having a conversation about what's important first, as opposed to sell the property and then have the conversation later. It's ridiculous. It needs to be changed. But that's a federal issue. At the state issue, I agree with the person who came last. We need to talk to our delegation, make sure that they're on board with understanding what we want and how we want to do it. But having an advisory deal right now, I think creates a bigger problem. And that is, we are actually very close to the California border. And if a big company wants to come in and they buy the property from Boeheim, they can build their platforms out there. They don't ever have to come into Coos County or Curry County. They just run their line down and go into California. So when we put out an issue like this and we make a big stink, all of a sudden it just says, okay, let's, let's plan our plan that doesn't include Coos County. Then you have no voice at all. And so I am very concerned that when you start asking certain questions, it creates more problems than you will ever answer. So think real wisely about putting things on ballots which have no relationship with respect to any control we have over the outcome. So, just, just be careful about it. And I would encourage you, if you haven't gone to the thousands of meetings that are happening about this, then you don't know how much. And I know Bob's been at most of them, so I, I, I can, I really appreciate the fact that you go to those meetings. I'm just not sure that any of these particular issues are the right kinds of questions to ask at this particular time.
You probably remember when I got appointed, I was, I'm one of three representatives for Oregon on the Boeheim Task Force.
That's right. And it's a big task force, and it needs to get something done.
Interestingly enough, I was on a Zoom meeting with Boeheim about three plus weeks ago. They did not allow any input. They closed the chat, they, they had the chat open, but they closed everybody's mics. And they just had a presentation of what they were going to do only. No back and forth at all. And then that same thing happened in the two public meetings, one in Coos Bay and one in, one in St. Paul Beach.
Yeah, I think.
Where they didn't allow any input by any of the local people.
It's not their process. Their process is not about input now, it's about input later on, which is actually ridiculous.
After the decision's been made, that's when it matters, right?
To rent the property, absolutely. But be careful when we get involved in those kinds of things without including our federal delegation, who is all behind changing Boeheim. I mean, I, I haven't met any of our federal delegation that isn't trying to figure out how to change that.
You know, I haven't heard that.
Really? I have.
There's no communication with our two federal senators or reps, or any of the reps about that.
Okay, well, get a hold of me, I'll try to talk to them.
If you happen to run into them.
But I, I, I really concur with John on this in that let's be cautious about anything that we put on a ballot to get input, because I think it does do what was said earlier. It, it raises the issue in people's minds that they had a decision to make that was going to change something. And if it doesn't at the end, it makes people very cynical of the whole process.
Thank you, Mr. Roblin, for the specificity of your comments as it pertains to the exact issue that's at question today. I think I saw your hand next, ma'am. And then I don't know who was next after that. We'll, we'll get you all, though.
Good morning, Commissioners. My, my name is Carrie Silva, and I'm a co-owner of the Fishing Vessel Jeanette Marie out of Charleston. Nervous, this is the first time I've been in this meeting. You'd think I'd be used to it after all the other meetings I've attended, right? Yes. My first thought when I heard.
Excuse me, maybe they didn't hear you. You're an owner of a fishing vessel.
I am, a co-owner. For, it'll be thirty-one years in March. But my husband has been fishing out of these waters for over forty years. I'm going to get emotional and don't want to. I know there's support for him, but, anyway. When I first heard this was being considered for opinion from the community, I was considering opposing it for the simple fact there's not enough education being brought forward from Boeheim or other industries. It could be a wind developer or even myself. We have tried numerous times, I've been in a coalition for over two and a half years, fighting not only to put a pause on the development of offshore wind, but to slow, to slow the process down, to get Boeheim to change their process because it is highly flawed. They do everything backwards that we are used to as a fishing community. I think there needs to be more education to the public. And maybe this is the way to do it, to get it out there on the ballot, to understand that your community doesn't understand what the ramifications could be to the fishing industry. Most importantly, to the California current, to the upwellings, every marine mammal out there. The endangered short tailed albatross, which you mentioned they would get sucked in. They are the most endangered seabird in the world. They are protected under three acts. I don't know if they are aware of it. I learned it two years ago. I know that they are an important species to the fishing fleet. It's the soul of a fisherman that's lost at sea. These birds spend their lifetime in the air. They very rarely land, and when they do, they find a mate, and they mate with that one bird. That's it, one egg a year. Also, these machines, they will require so much fossil fuels. Nobody understands the ramifications of that. They need it for their manufacturers to build these. These will be a thousand feet tall, possibly, with a generator or a nacelle, in the developers' words, maybe eighteen megawatts each. That is huge. The wingspans are over four hundred and thirty feet long. There's three of them. They do go around about two hundred miles an hour. And you cannot, a bird will not be able to get away from the, oh, the, thank you. They'll get sucked right in. There's no picking them up to determine how many there were, you know, destroy that. And when there is winds of gust over sixty miles an hour, seas swells, you know, maybe forty feet or higher, and one of them break off, who's going to go out and fix it in the middle of a storm? Gale warnings, nobody. By then it'll be too late. And I understand that this is a, you're trying to decide if this should be. Maybe it should, so people can understand the ramifications and, and have you look into it further, possibly stopping the connection in Oregon, because maybe eminent domain will be used. They need to bring that power to shore somewhere, connect to the power grid somewhere. Could be your property, could be my property, I live up the Coos River. There's just so many unknown, unknown questions that have yet to be answered from anybody, and they will not do. Boeheim will not perform problematic environmental impact study done until a lease is finalized with a wind developer. And they have never stopped a construction of wind farms on our ocean. So it might be for it.
A couple of things that you've said. Have you ever gone up to Columbia and you looked at the windmills?
Yes.
Some of them, I have pictures of them, where there's brown streaks running down the support columns.
Yes.
They've failed.
Yes.
There's about a hundred and some gallons in those, they're the smaller ones. The other ones you talked about are about a thousand, eleven hundred feet tall. You know they have over a thousand gallons of oil in them when they spring a leak? Where does it go? Out in the ocean.
Right in the California current.
Yeah, and Boeheim, as I understand it, is exempt from environmental issues.
I believe so.
Yeah. And, and the third thing is that we were all told that windmills will last roughly twenty years. Well, now they're finding out in the oceans, especially in Scotland, that they're failing in five to six years.
Frankly, my concern is.
Can I just, real quick?
Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
In that, I believe we might have read the same article or something that they had to decompose, well, I shouldn't say that, decommissioned, shut them down and haul them in.
Right.
To port.
That's correct.
To repair and do maintenance on those. And it will take like six months so that country or that area is without power. So that's something we're lacking in power.
I share the same concerns you have about offshore wind. I spent my life not on the sea, but working with the sea. I know it's a rough place to serve the Lord. And I'm not sure that this is practical. I have concerns that we'll spend more energy putting these things out there than we'll, than they'll make over. But, and they're going to be hard to maintain, all those things. I don't want to do anything to stifle discussion. And I'm afraid that, well, put it this way. What if everyone votes yes on this? Or not everyone, but a majority vote yes?
Oh, you're asking me?
Or, or that, that they want.
My answer to that, I will be doing the same thing that I've been doing for two and a half years.
You will be, but.
So will the coalition.
But as, that, if, if the vote, not, not yes to put it on, but, but, but yes, we want offshore wind, we want you to work for that. There's a limited amount of, that, that creates an expectation for us. And if we oppose it, as you would like us to do, as, as I am inclined to do, given what, little I know about it now, but I know, you know, things evolve, what, what, how, what I, the questions may be answered. But I just don't want the community to have the impression that I'm stuck with what they wanted. They want this. And I think there's a chance that we, that we'll have enough people that would support this, that they would want it, once it gets on the ballot. That makes it awkward for us.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, maybe, so then those people, whenever anyone gets up and says no, then they come back and say, well, that's fine. But a majority of the people, as reflected by the commissioner's comments, want it. And I, I just worry about unintended consequences.
So.
Well, but it's, I don't know.
So, so, so. So I actually did come because I was possibly misinformed on the reasons it was going to be on the ballot. But if you're seeking information to maybe educate, because people might not know, and it might make them, it's hard for me to reach everybody in Coos County, okay? And doing it this way, this way possibly would seek their curiosity to actually do their due diligence and understand the ramifications of a turbine leaking in the middle of the California current in pristine fishing areas as well.
I worry about the re.
I, I understand that, I understand that.
If we say yes, then those that are supporting us, we, we no longer have to make our case.
I think they're going to support it anyway. There's some people that will support it and will not budge. But there might be some people, if we could, if we could just change their mind maybe and have them look at it differently, instead of green energy, because it is not the green energy they expect it to be. It is the lining of the pockets.
I agree. I have, we know we got a lot of responses to this. We got a lot of people said yes, a lot of people said no.
Yes.
A lot of people said, I don't know and I need to know more. And we're, we're, we're not taking into account what those.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it would educate people.
You made an excellent point, and, and Arnie too, about I'm deeply involved in this and so are you.
Yes.
And we've done tons of research for the last couple of years. And we've done tons of research for the last couple of years.
If this is not what people are seeing on the ballot.
Putting this on the ballot for people who are totally uninformed would give an accurate reading of what actually people think about it. Because they don't know about it. You, you, I'm going, you made, you triggered something in me that said, well, if we put that out there and they don't know anything about it. We get it just a mishmash of votes that they didn't know, so they just market, yes or no, and they didn't know.
Right.
So.
I think there needs to be more education.
I'm having trouble with that, but how do you get the word out of any pluses in a whole, my personal opinion, how many minuses there are about this particular project?
It's very serious.
It is a good point, I agree, that, that an uninformed opinion is of significantly less value than an informed one. So there is that. Okay.
So I'm waiting.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I kind of forgot about you for a little while there.
No worries. I have many comments to make, but I'm gonna keep this to this one subject. And it will be brief and you, you have just made some of my points for me. Which is that.
I need names.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gail Parati Kokil.
Thank you, Gail.
Um, an uninformed vote is very misleading, can be very misleading and dangerous. And the education has to come before the vote. The vote cannot come before the education. Believe me, I understand how difficult it is to reach people, to educate the public. I spent fifteen years doing community outreach and education on a number of issues. And you can tell someone something for the fifth time and they still haven't realized they've heard it. So it is very difficult, it is very challenging. But if you want to put this on the ballot for, to, to get information, the responsibility, I think, is on you to do the education before the vote. And that's it on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gail. All right, who's, Mr. Jennings was next, I see, and then I see you, and yeah. Good morning, David.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners, my name is David Jennings. I live in Kokil. I wanted to second what Chairman Taylor said regarding the fact that he doesn't hate anyone. And I think that's a reassuring statement because there are people that apparently think that. You know, I at times have been very critical of Mr. Taylor and didn't know what to make of him at times. But he's always treated me with a great deal of respect. And I've never, from what I've observed, ever found him to be less respectful to people, regardless of whether they agree with him or not. And I think that's an important thing to remember at a time when things are pretty tense about politics in general and here on the local level. And I think that maybe having an attitude of giving people at least the benefit of the doubt in terms of their motive is really important. And trying to find common ground, which I think is absolutely crucial. Now, in terms of the, the wind energy thing, you know, I do agree that this is, out of all these ballot measures, advisory ballot measures. The one major that is a matter of county concern. Now Senator Rogan and Commissioner Sweet have made comments that I think show some of the pitfalls of doing this. And putting it on the ballot, even if it is a matter of county concern. I'd also like to say, unless you'd rather just have me wait, make a general comment about these advisory committee votes. As I think I mentioned last time, a commissioner's job is very difficult. You've all said, and you're all correct, that we're in the middle of the fiscal crisis. There are all these other intense issues that crop up from time to time, like the county, you know, the easements about structures and the easements. So you tend to have a lot of conflict with the job. One of the things that I think is important at trying to build democracy at all levels, and right now we're at the local level. Is to recognize conflict, respect differing views, but try to find agreement where you can do that. And I think there are a lot of areas where you can find agreement. Obviously, there's in those ballot measures, you don't find agreement. The reality is that most of these issues, other than the wind energy, I don't really think that the board, as a board, has a lot of influence on this. That doesn't mean, I guess, that from some perspectives you shouldn't get involved in them. But all of you people have skills and talents. One of the things you don't have is the ability to make more time. A county commissioner, any office holder basically has a certain finite amount of time that they can work on things. And I think the degree it's possible that it's best to work on county issues and try to find at least some consensus or at least a majority viewpoint. And I think that could be done. I think that getting into these peripheral issues that people tend to get very heated about is only something you should do if it's definitely a county matter. And I don't see these other ballot measures as being a county major. That doesn't mean the issues are not important, but the board is the board of commissioners to administer the county. There's times during my career, both as an employee and after retirement, where I voted for county commissioner candidates that I probably would not vote for, for legislature. Because I was not voting for somebody to take stands on a bunch of issues. I wanted somebody that could manage the county and do a good job of it. And I think people can do that across a wide ideological spectrum. And I think the resources of county commissioners is best focused, especially at a time of such crisis, on the county and on the county's business. The other issue that I think is important to consider, we're asking people to absorb a lot of information. And it's very important they absorb this on the public safety levy for the jail and district attorney. Now, if these majors go on the ballot, you're gonna be asking them, hopefully, to spend a lot of time educating them across a wide range of issues that are complex. So I think to some degree, putting them on the May ballot makes it less likely that you're actually gonna get a yes vote on the jail levy. If you really feel like as a board that you need to do this, I realize maybe you feel like there's a sense of time on this, you have to do it right away. But I think it might be better to put them on the November ballot and then spend the summer possibly educating people on that. That, that's up to you. I mean, obviously, you're the one that were elected and I respect that. And when I say that I don't think the commissioners could, should focus on these peripheral issues, even though I might like, like it. Any one of you is free to endorse certain things. Commissioner Taylor can go out and say, I support school vouchers. I would oppose that, but I'd say that's his right. He won the office of county commissioner. As a county commissioner, you're certainly free to endorse those things. But I really think it'd be wise to stay away from the contentious issues. And to focus on the issues where you're likely to have solutions that actually work, you have influence on. If people want to have influence on the federal and state level, I guess they need to either run for office or be involved in getting people elected to office at that level. The three of you were, were basically hired to manage the county and I'd like to see you focus on that above other things. Especially in the environment, for instance, there was a great deal and is a great deal of suspicion about when you put out the advisory thing, which I thank you for withdrawing, on making a clerk's office appointed. But in this environment, those are the things that are gonna happen. You're gonna have people get very, very suspicious and are very, very suspicious about the motives of the board. And that again argues for caution in getting involved in controversial issues you don't need to, that are peripheral to the office of Coos County Commissioner. I would like to just mention in closing one thing, even though it's just one element, but about the election reform. If you thought about, for instance, doing a hand count, which I think on the surface can be very attractive. A hand count of paper ballots, it sounds good. On the other hand, in Shasta County, when they were thinking of doing that, the county clerk in Shasta County told the supervisors, which they call the, you know, that's what they call commissioners down there, at least in that county. She estimated that it would cost an additional one point six million dollars, actually more than that. And that she would have to hire a thousand extra people to do the counting. And she wasn't sure if she could meet the California statutory deadlines for certifying the election. Shasta County is bigger than our county, but it's not huge. It has a hundred and eighty some thousand people. And I think their voter turnout was about a hundred and twenty some thousand in twenty twenty-two. So I think people need to give a lot of thought to the implications of some of these suggestions. And I think if you're thinking from a county perspective, you certainly don't want to incur more costs for the county. Or, you know, have more confusion and more difficulty. There's certain things you could work on as commissioners for these county elections here that could possibly establish more credibility. But I just mentioned that and then there are other issues I go into depth and I just don't want to because it would take up a lot of time. Again, I just urge you to be very cautious on this and want to thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you for coming, David.
I, I need to.
You need to go.
Yeah, but I'd like to go, no, I, I just want, unfortunately, when we set this meeting today, I had to schedule a meeting at ten o'clock that I must attend. I'm sharing a statewide meeting regarding county forest trust lands. So I'm sorry to leave and I, we've not reached any decision. I really want to be a part of any decision we have. So I'm trying to figure out what the next step is. I'm sorry to essentially say to everyone that's come here for the second time that, at least from my standpoint, I'm not gonna be able to help with the decision today. So what do we do next? I understand that the county council still has some concerns about the ballot title. I think those concern, if, if, if my understanding is correct, we, we need to address those concerns. We shouldn't approve or disapprove something today that isn't going to be what we ultimately would have. So maybe tabling again?
I would just clarify, it's not that I have concerns, it's that, I think additional research would be a very good idea and that.
Well, it's kind of a concern.
That's the way it works.
So I'll leave that.
Just keep in mind that March first deadline is.
That's the problem, yes, thank you.
But again, March first is not the end of the world. There's, good lord, I hope not. And maybe we need more time to, to really look at this and decide and talk about it. I don't think anything's gonna, big's gonna happen between May and November.
Please.
If you do decide to put it on the general ballot, it would sound like it's ahead of schedule. Keep in mind that the cost of that will be more, just because we will have to do a order template, or we will have to do a flyer that's included in the ballot. That will be, we're a little over fifty thousand dollars for voters to sign now. So that would be the cost of printing at least another fifty thousand plus flyers for the ballot as well.
I bet so.
Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioner Sweet. We'll, we'll just continue the, the conversation here. Oh, I'm sorry, this, this lady was next, please, yeah.
Thank you. My name is Ashley O'Dickie. I'm a Coos County resident as well as a representative from the climate justice organization Rogue Climate with an office here in downtown Coos Bay. In regards to the offshore wind issue, like our organization's been tracking it over the last five years. And we are undecided on the issue because we need to transition off of fossil fuels. But the costs must not outweigh the benefits for South Coast communities, tribal governments, as well as industries such as fishing. I wanted to note that the scope of the ballot measure does seem limited, especially hearing previous comments about education. That if this is to move forward, there may need to be a third option in terms of undecided. Because undecided, because we don't know who the developers are gonna be. I mean, even over the last few years alone, the information about the technology's been changing. Also, when we take a look at the Boeum process, which you have been a part of, we're still at the very beginning stages before turbines are even developed. So also want to note that the scope of this ballot measure does not include components that would most likely impact Coos County residents directly. Which includes the transmission upgrades that would need to be needed to support offshore wind, which the main substation for Southern Oregon's in Coos County. And the port development, which to support the assembly of the turbines, which the port of Coos Bay right now's been looked, studied upon Boeum as being that main supporting system. We've also been in communications with, with partners down in the Humboldt communities that have already been ahead of this process than us. And so that's where they're seeing where the most likely impacts are directly on our communities is those transmission and port components. Currently, the Department of Defense, tribal governments and fishing industries have shared concerns with Boeum. That right now currently, Coos County's not even in consideration for turbine leasing process in this current stage of the Boeum process. The federal government is moving forward with the, with doing the lease sale by November. And they're merely acting as a leasing agent. Doesn't necessarily mean the turbines will be constructed. There'll be plenty of time to give comments and plenty of time of local control through the different amount of state and local permits. That will be happening throughout the different elements of this floating offshore wind development. So if county commissioners are looking for opportunities to be an effective voice in this process during this next year. Actually during, I believe, April or May, the Department of Land Conservation and Development is gonna be hosting a federal consistency review process. That'll be taking a look at federal, state and local permits ahead of this leasing process. And they'll, they'll be looking to do hearings here in Coos County. So that's an opportunity for, you know, for more community education as well as having more input with the state. Also, right now, the state of Oregon is trying to develop a roadmap process. Because the state of Oregon hasn't had too much of a leadership role at this point within offshore wind development. And that's what's really needed right now. So right now, there's a bill HB forty eighty that would actually give resources to the state of Oregon to have more staff support and more state leadership in this process. And one of the goals within that roadmap process is to work more directly with local communities and with leaders as such as yourself. So that bill's currently at Ways and Means right now. So there's opportunities for the commissioners to support that bill, to get those resources, to have more of a voice. I think that's really important. Also, another opportunity for commissioners to have an effective voice right now in the offshore wind process. Last week, the Boeum announced the finalized wind energy areas as well as an environmental assessment on those sites. And it's a very technical comment period. I've been trying to figure out what exactly to make comments on, working with a lot of different partners that have been navigating this process throughout the US. And currently, right now, a number of us, including as well as the Confederate tribes of the Coos, Lur, Onkwa and Tsai Utsla Indians. Are making a request to Boeum to extend that comment deadline because the deadline currently is March fifteenth. And so if we really want to have a voice in like the way how this, next steps of the leasing process go. Our communities and interested stakeholders and tribal governments need more time. And so right now, as commissioners, you folks can actually make a request to Boeum on the federal register to extend that comment period. As well as, I've heard that Senators Wyden and Merkley are looking to make a similar request as well. So those are, in lieu of this ballot measure, there's also other opportunities within the process to have an effective voice. And I also want to note too, down the road, because there's gonna be just tremendous amount of permits. And as well, other opportunities for engagement that, you know, that's where it's really important to think about what on the local level can help us have that voice. So I know like the last month, we, the county commissioners adopted the first phase of the Coos Bay estuary management plan. That's part of that federal consistency review. I know there's a huge ask from a lot of community members to get that second phase going. And so if that second phase can get going sooner, that's when, you know, when we think about where can we be effective in the process. Updating management plans such as that helps lead to that, more of that local control. So, yeah, just wanted to share, there's some other opportunities outside of this ballot measure to have more of a voice.
So you triggered some memories that I didn't bring up, but.
Oh.
When I met with RWE twice now, the German offshore wind farm people, I asked them several questions. One was, would they be seeking feed and tariff? And I got avoided. They didn't answer me, yes or no. The second one you brought up was the onshore upgrades for the power system. They didn't answer that either, however, is my understanding that all the onshore upgrades would be on us.
Not necessarily. I know there's a lot more to look at and develop and that's actually steps in the process that really need to have more of a focus on. And because right now, a lot of the focus has been primarily on the leasing process. And so that's where those other components are very important for us as a community to be thinking about because everybody's really focused on the turbine sites.
Yeah, but being on all of the Zoom meetings with Boham, et cetera, and having meetings with different companies is my understanding that they expect us to make all the upgrades onshore.
Well, there's also a part of the process that.
If it happens, of course.
Of course, if it happens, it's, there's so many elements of intervention. And one of those other points of intervention that may help out with those concerns that you have are what's called enforceable agreements and merit stipulations. So, and that's a part of the process that we haven't gotten to yet.
Right.
And one thing I do want to know, offshore wind has not been the same from state to state. It has looked very different and that's where in Oregon, we can look to what we want to define as the Oregon way. And so those concerns that you have, I know right now, there's like great payer protections that are being examined at. And so I know that other utility companies are thinking about that, but you know, that's, the conversations are just beginning.
Like Commissioner Taylor said, on the East Coast, most of those are ocean floor based. They're attached to the floor.
I'm familiar.
There are several thousands of feet deep where they want to anchor them. As explained to me by RWE, they would have a screw system going into the ocean floor and then they would be attached by huge nylon cables on all four points of the floating platform. And so if that goes awry, you've got all that mess up there. I haven't heard anything about Boham to clean all that up.
We still don't know what kind of developer's going to be. We don't know what type of technology is going to be used. So thinking about those, it's, you know, we're, technology's changing all the time around this. Floating offshore wind is such a relatively new technology. That's why like our organization, you know, we have the word climate in our name and we're still in the middle because we want to make sure what is happening with this process. So statements like that, I think, are slightly ahead of the road because we don't know, again, we don't know who the techno, technology is going to be, don't know the company. And.
Hopefully, we've read about what has happened in Europe. Like the Germans, they call wind and solar schizophrenic energy because obviously no sun or solar, but on the wind, wind has to blow at a certain speed. If it's too much or too little, it obviously doesn't work. So they've gone back to coal-fired plants, you know, most of them. And in France, there's eighty, eighty-plus percent all nuclear. And I grew up, when you duck and hide under your desk as a kid, you know, nuclear thing was going to happen. Now, I understand that rolls away.
Okay, well, thinking about energy resiliency for the South Coast, you know, their offshore wind might not be the one size that's all option. There may need to be, that's where there's opportunities to have conversations about systems, make our communities more energy resilient, thinking about the different, if one system goes down, what can help pick up? So without going too into details, I think there's just an opportunity to examine that more as a community and possibly this ballot measure may deter those efforts because people might be. Anyway, I just think with the, what's happening with Boham currently this year, there's other opportunities for our county commissioners to be more effective in this process.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ashley. I'm sorry, ma'am, you had your hand up a few minutes ago. Okay, yes. Oh, I, my apologies, you know what? Okay, we'll get you next. Thank you, Kathy.
My name is Elaine Christie, Christie. I feel like I'm representing a normal voter. And so it's taken me a while to figure out that you've already made the decision to put this on the ballot. And the question is, how do you phrase it on the ballot?
That's not, that's not accurate.
Okay.
No, this, this meeting is to discuss. And, and the specific language is also a component of the discussion, of course, but there has been no decision of when to put these on the ballot or not.
So. But the concept is that this, this, this meeting, that you would be able to come up with language that would allow you to then put this on the ballot as well.
The.
Not necessarily, I'd say.
Actually, I have seen this in teleprompter. So there wasn't any consensus about how this was formulated or anything.
So, so then I'm totally confused and, um, but what is going through my mind is, I'm a retired graduate of nurse and I survived SOAP charting, which was S-O-A-P, was a new concept and charting many years ago. And where it becomes subjective would be the problem, the person stating the fact, which would be, we need wind energy, we need an alternative, wind energy. Objective would be ways of, ideas of how that would happen. And then the action would be creating that, uh, ideas that come together and be formulated and then included into the plan, which would then be enacted. And the gist of the sense I'm getting is that we've skipped those first three parts and we're now at the plan. And this was already stated, part of the description, which like a double negative in the questionnaire. And you're asking, what I'm hearing is you want to ask people to give an opinion on yes or no to wind energy for Coos County. And to me, the, right now, it would be an emotional response. It wouldn't be an educated response to the question because there are very strong feelings about a yea or nay of wind energy. And so what I would really like to see is using the high school, which has been coming to pass for education. The Egyptian theater has become a great place to have education because frankly, there's so much conflicting information. I'm from Scotland and Scotland actually is in the process of creating and to be entirely fossil-free and use wind farms. And I learned to swim in the North Sea. It's very cold, very choppy, and very similar to the Pacific Ocean. And they actually have created wind farms. And so I just feel, as I say, maybe I'm being really thick, but I feel that people are going to be asked a question on the ballot to which they have very little real information. It's, and, and I'm learning today about all of the research and the groups that are actually active in looking at wind energy. I would love to see more education for the global public like me between now and being asked to make a vote because at this point, the vote is not a logical vote. The vote would be completely an emotional response for the general public.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. I appreciate it. Kathy, would you like?
I appreciate the meaning. My name is Kathy. I'm delighted to be here and see democracy in action. I have been in a fully meeting for quite some time. An important time. I got the privilege over the last several months in multiple venues and a number of occasions to hear all three of you, I'm sorry, speak about the existential threat that the county is up against with funding and why the ballot measure, the public safety ballot measure is so, 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 so important to all of us right now. And I do fear that, because all the conversation that's happening today is important and wind energy is something that is going to be large for us for quite some time. How we vote is something that we have heard deeply about. And I'm really glad that the ballot measure to look at the relationship for our county purpose has been taken off the ballot. I think that was a very appropriate decision to make. But what I'm hearing today and, and what I, what I heard from you all in other venues about the importance of what's happening with our criminal justice system and the needs of community support and our Jay-Z festival, it is the largest for me because it's imminent, it has to happen right now and it's really, really critical to how the county moves forward and stays solvent. And I would like to suggest that you think long and hard about the timing of putting these other ballot measures on the ballot and what, how that might influence the electorate when they get their ballots and they're sitting at their kitchen tables and reading their voters' pamphlets, when really the most important thing that you need to do right now as fiduciaries of the county is make sure that it is running and it is solvent. And so I might suggest that you give some thought to the timing of the other ballot measures. And I've heard today, and it's something that I have not been able to, is the responsibility that you have or not to educate the public on the measures that you've put on the ballot. And what is the cost of that? And how do you determine what an education program looks like if you do feel that you have a responsibility to educating people about the ballot measures that you are putting forward? And I know that resources are tight and putting ballot measures on costs money. So I would raise that as an issue right now as well. But just the important thing that you do in the next three months or four months or four weeks, to make sure that voters of this county understand the importance of and what will happen if it fails with the public safety measure. So I might suggest that your resources turn to that because it is so imminent. And then give yourselves time to get the wording correct on these other ballot measures that are of interest to you. The education is a piece of it. Make sure you're doing that appropriately between now and fall. Give yourselves some time and some breathing room and maybe not limiting waters for what is imminent and is at hand that's really important. And I want to compliment the three of you for speaking so eloquently and so succinctly.
Taxes and the rest that we live off of. So I just, well, I, I appreciate you really. I consider you to be a man of honor. Just know that you're, the way you.
Mr. Taylor, I heard you speak about it as well, about why we are in the situation that we are in and what the importance is of, of the citizens of Coos County deciding how they want to move forward. But this just seems so existential and so important that I'll hope you give, give some thought to timing, education. Give yourselves a little breathing room and maybe just take your fiduciary responsibility incredibly seriously and let's get this other ballot measure passed.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. All right. Yes, sir, in the back? Next, next.
I'm Chris Lukey from Banden. And with John Sweet gone, I just wanted to echo comments he made early on that he didn't feel like it was necessary for these ballot measures to go forward and that they don't provide enough information. The questions that you have in front of you on, on each of the three issues are complicated questions that we've heard today and it's very difficult to get these boiled down to a yes or no sort of response. If you're serious and sincere about the importance of getting answers to these things, I suggest you need to engage in some way with some professional survey design people that can actually help you write a non-biased survey and work in that way. I realize that that's extra expense. There may be ways to do it in, in not so difficult of an issue. But it doesn't seem right that you need to get all this done in a week so that you can get it on the May ballot and that postponing it is a good idea. I don't understand what happens now when John Sweet is gone and you're left with two commissioners. Is your intention to go forward with a vote for, of two commissioners? Is that the appropriate response? I'd like to hear what you think.
Well, as far as intention, we haven't had a vote yet, but two commissioners do, do make a quorum.
And that's, and that's fine and that's the plan?
Well, the, the, the plan will be to, to make a motion that establishes a course forward from here, exactly what direction that course is. Honestly, I have not really decided yet what, what my intention would be for that. My intention at the moment is to hear the comments from everybody who's taken the time out of their lives to attend and, and make those comments today and then base my decision on that.
I'd endorse John Sweet's idea that you tabled this motion today.
All right. Thank you for that. Yes, oh, no, right here, yes, and then in the, in, behind you actually first, yes, thank you.
I'm Rex Leach, Coos Bay, Oregon, Charleston, Oregon. I have two fishing vessels in Charleston. I've been fishing for forty years. I'm a third-year generator, a third-generation fisherman and my sons are fourth-generation fishermen, so. I'm not opposed to wind energy. I'm opposed to offshore wind energy. I think it's a harsh environment. I don't think it will ever survive out there and it will, it will take away bottom that I have fished. When I'm saying bottom, the habitat of that area of the, of the ocean that I have fished for forty years and I'll never get it back because once they place that stuff there, like you said, there's no bond, no guarantee that when it fails, that they'll take all that stuff that they put on the bottom, off the bottom. It'll remain there in the area that I can never, ever fish again. And so that, that concerns me. And the other concern I have is, I've heard testimony today that, just like a lot of people said, that the public, the general public really doesn't have an education on offshore wind. They're not, they don't have a clue what the whole all-wax is. And that, that scares me because it's going to take away my businesses or could, it could damage my businesses. And, and that just, it's just, I'm afraid to put it on a ballot because the people that aren't educated could make, could make mistakes and ruin people's livelihoods. So that's basically my concern is I would hope that you guys consider maybe education before we vote.
And thank you, Carrie, for providing food for all of us.
Yeah, we do.
We like it.
Yeah, well, and my business is put a million dollars a year each into the community and that money goes out tenfold. So it's, it's not just going to hurt us as fishermen, it will hurt, it will impact the communities too.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am. And then, and then you next, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I, so you'll be, you'll be third up next.
Again, Sandra Woodside from Banden. Thank you for hearing me again, commissioners. At this point, my concern has just become not the information that's being gathered, but the process and procedure that you are about to enter into. In October of 2023, the state legislature passed HB twenty-eight fifty, which is an ethics issue. And in that process, they, they outlined a new process for registering complaints for violations of ethics. And in that process, they, they outlined a new process for registering complaints for violations of ethics by not following your own procedures as published in your operating manuals. While you may have a quorum of two here, not all commissioners are present. And the operating manual indicates that you are allowed to have discussions, but you are not allowed to make decisions without all counselors being present. So at this point, I, as I understand the rules, you are not in a position to take a vote on what to do, your information gathering. And a vote cannot be taken or a decision cannot be made without Commissioner Sweet present because his voice is not present at the table. Even if you can outvote him, whatever his concerns are in the moment when you are voting are not recorded. So if you proceed with what you're doing, I will proceed with filing a complaint, following the rules. So that we may ensure that the public is, that your processes and procedures are transparent, that they follow your rules. And my interest now is not the outcome of the vote, it's holding you accountable to us to make sure you follow your own processes. Thank you.
Fair enough. Just one moment, please, no, not, not, I thank you Sandra, I appreciate it. Just hold on one moment. Counselor, could you please, can you, can you speak to that question?
I'd be curious to know, and maybe you can provide a citation, but I'm not familiar with that requirement. I mean, under the.
Nor am I.
Under our county rules. Obviously, quorum consists of two commissioners.
Yeah.
Voting as laid out under the board's procedure doesn't say anything about all three commissioners needing to be present. There's nothing in state law to that effect.
Okay.
So I believe you could, you know, entertain a vote. I mean, there's one thing worth noting, which is if, if there was a tie, there wouldn't be a majority vote one way or the other.
Then that would be a table.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And as a added, added comment to that, I'll, I'll say that at a Oregon Government Ethics Committee instructional meeting. Thanks to misinformed complaints levied, I was the one in the room with the largest number of ethics complaints. It was quite, quite amazing. Yes, ma'am, please, now, thank you.
I should say, there was one against me some time ago and it was dismissed by the ethics.
Mine, mine have all been dismissed as well. I should have mentioned that, thank you.
Hello again, my name is Kathleen Packer and I live in North Bend. And I would just like to suggest. We could have, you know, this full gathering and you presenting a forum on educating us about the levy, the tax levy, okay? That's proposed. That could have been done Tuesday, that could be done today. You know, we could be spending our tide of energy focusing on getting a tax levy passed. And explaining to the county why it's absolutely necessary. So I would suggest that you guys get out there, conduct some forums in Coos Bay and in the other communities, you know? And, and present the situation to the public and allow them to express how they feel about it. And correct them, you know, when they say, oh, you can take the money from this department, you can take the money from that department. Oh, it's over there, then you would have the ability to, to address that and inform the public. How much better that would be than wasting our time on these advisories?
There have been multiple public forums, what you talk about, and there are upcoming ones also. I don't have the list with me. Uh, it's on my desk, but I'll share it with you.
There's a recording.
For, for upcoming. Yeah, there's recordings up on, like, at the city council of Coos Bay, et cetera.
Right, and I would expect legal reform holders is going to be coming.
Right. But there's all kinds, there's going to be one in Powers, Banden, upcoming, et cetera. Besides all the ones that, there was one at Mill Casino for the Wednesday Business Connection, meaning the Chamber of Commerce. There was one at the City Hall of Coos Bay here recently. There's been several others, I can't, maybe the sheriff's here, he can elaborate on the rest of them, they've already been heard. But they are out there.
Right.
Now.
And I know how hard it is to get the word out.
Does it get to all people?
Yes.
No.
Right.
It is really difficult to explain how we got to the situation we, we are in. If I may, Mr. Chair, take a side, a side moment here to explain how we got there.
Well, you don't need to explain it for me, I, maybe other people, I mean, I know why we got here. And it's amazing to me frankly, that it's taken this long to get to this point.
We've tried to hold on as best we could over the years. But in the mid, uh, if you don't know, the county used to survive and, and never had a, much of a tax rate, property tax rate. Because we existed on the ONC timber revenue. We, we got five point nine percent of fifty percent. The other fifty percent went to the BLM for their operations and making new bridges and roadways and all that stuff. So we got five point nine percent of fifty percent in the mid eighties in today's dollars. We received twenty-five million dollars. Amazing. Rightly so, the commissioners then didn't need to increase the property tax rate for citizens because they had all this money to going into the general fund. And then they transferred some to the road department, other agencies within the county. But a lot of it went into the county general fund, which is sheriff and jail and clerk and assessor, et cetera, commissioners. So along comes in the mid nineties, the Northwest Forest Plan and the environmental rules. And if you've been here long enough, there was a big four about that. At that time, the BLM went and allocated funding, they no longer have to survive on their sales, they are paid through the US Treasury. But we, the counties, had to survive on less and less and less over since then for timber sales. Now, the nineteen thirty-seven act, which set all this up for the western Oregon counties, which I've been the vice president of this for the last eight years. Set by Congress, and we're going to Supreme Court here in March. That is for the exclusive benefit of the counties. Nobody else in the act is mentioned, just the counties, to do with county government, okay? So as things progressed in the two thousands, counties got really desperate for funds without asking for more taxes. The Congress initiated the SRS, the Civil World Schools Act, which was kind of a small stopgap. To kind of help the counties along, even though they weren't producing timber in the ONC forests. So last year, we got one point three million. And if you don't know, the total taxes the county gets to keep, we bill out all the taxes for all the eighty-some tax district districts. But we get to keep a little over six million. The jail alone without all the other general fund departments is seven point eight million at the current level. That SRS fund has now terminated. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, we're looking at about a two, about a four million dollar shortfall. And we've tried everything, selling off properties and doing all kinds of stuff. And we're kind of at the end of our rope, so to speak, that there's no other avenue to go at. So we're asking the voters to, I think it's ninety-eight cents a thousand. To keep basically the jail as it is and expand it to another fifty beds. So we'll have a hundred and fifty beds, as well as keep deputies still on the road and keep the assessor with statutory requirements, the county clerk. She only has two people in elections now and two people in recording. Time was they had many more people than that. When I was county assessor, we had thirty-two. Now they're down to, I think, about thirteen or fourteen. They're the ones, and the tax office is the one that assesses and then collects all the taxes for all the eighty-some tax districts. The fire districts, the water districts, the sewer districts, the cities, et cetera. So we've down to a point where there's no place else to cut those other departments in support of the jail. And it's, it's really difficult. And we've tried every, which way we can, we got a little stopgap when we had the Biden money that came in.
And for some.
We use that for support for the jail, et cetera. But now that's almost all gone, we're going to use what's a little left to go into that general fund, but we still have this gap. And it's distressing that the sheriff is just now getting trained deputies for the jail. And they will start, I think, in about May, late April, May. But if this levy fails, we've got them trained up. And now they're certified, and then they go somewhere else. And that's not very good either. And with this whole drug problem that we're experiencing throughout Oregon and the massive increase in crime and deaths and all that kind of stuff. Makes it very difficult.
Yeah, well, and I said on Tuesday, I'm quite sympathetic with that. I mean, I mean, I will do everything I can to help you get that levy passed. You know, I will blanket my property with signs or whatever else I need to do. But I just feel like that's where our energy needs to be, not, not here, you know, giving advisors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we have somebody else in the room come up, I want to also provide opportunity to the folks online. And so I'm going to take one of those and then we'll take one in the room and then the next online. So the next up I see is NK Lane. Can you cue them up, Bobby? You're being unmuted, NK Lane. And there you go. Or are they gone? They just disappeared? All right, then Metzen Rodriguez online would be the next up and we'll stick with that one online, one in the room. Metzgen, or Metzen Rodriguez?
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Already, Coos County Sheriff's Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment on the proposed advisory measures for the Coos County ballot. My name is Metzen Rodriguez and I'm a policy coordinator at United Oregon and a Coos Bay constituent. We are an organization.
Please, please hold just a moment, we, we're having a little trouble getting your sound balanced so that we can all hear you in the room? We're working on that, okay, I got a thumbs up, so, I'm sorry, please continue.
Already, so my name is Metzen Rodriguez, I'm a policy coordinator at United Oregon and at Coos Bay constituent. We are an organization led by people of color, immigrants and refugees, rural communities and people experiencing poverty. Today, I'm representing our members across the state, more specifically those from rural and coastal communities. It is critical for us to engage our members in a way that is accessible, sustainable and easy to understand. This is why today we ask you to vote no on the proposed measures. The direct threat to our democracy and our local government revenue structures need to be brought down. For example, protect votes by mail. Oregon has been voting by mail since the late nineteen eighties and we have seen a direct increase in voter participation. Moving to in-person on one day with ID on paper ballots is a form of disenchantment, historically using states to perpetuate systemic racism and oppression. Especially for those who may have already faced day-to-day barriers to in-person activities. Such as individuals with disability, elderly citizens or those who live in more rural areas far from family location. Taking away citizens' voices, Coos County citizens have the right to elect their leaders, including the person who runs our county elections office. In order to maintain accountability and transparency. In years of school choice, we must not continue to exacerbate educational inequality. For Coos County to have a strong educational system, it must be fully funded, not picked apart by inaccurate policies for private ventures. For economic development, commissioners should be looking at ways to expand economic development opportunities instead of shutting out ways to bring in more revenue. It is important that we prioritize renewable energy projects and advance the health of our environment and communities. My community urges you to vote no on these measures. As elected, your responsibility is to protect our district through accessibility and sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
I would just note there that at the moment, we're, we're just discussing the first of the advisory questions on those.
At the moment, that's.
County's position on, on short.
That's, that's correct, so that's what we're commenting on is this first ballot title. Yes, I'm sorry that you've had to wait so long for your turn.
Carrie Brown, Coop Hill, I just want to say, if I was to, oh, sorry. If I was to pick this up today as a voter, an uneducated voter, I would look at it and I wouldn't understand the consequences of my vote. And that's, I think, really important, especially later on, because if I voted, um, like, yes, and then all of a sudden I realized that this is not what I wanted. Or if I voted no, and then there's money taken away and moving towards something that I didn't realize that that's what it was going to be used for. You know, that could be really frustrating as a voter.
Oh, so you're talking about like measure one-ten?
No idea what that is, so I don't know. But, so, that's what I mean, though, it's like, I just want to make sure that whatever you put on there, and when I pick it up and I look at it, I understand the consequences of my vote and where my money is going. And where, like, the time that you guys are spending, because that's also our money too. But that, that's being a lot of careful, where, where I want and where my vote goes.
Very good, thank you for your comment. Yes, ma'am. I'll get you next, sir.
Thank you for letting me comment, one more thing, um, I've heard a lot of, oh, God, that is adorable.
That's Finn.
Hi. Just that I've heard a lot of suggestions about educating the public. I mostly have heard them from a, one side of the issue. So I just want to make sure you as commissioners understand that educating the public is about pros and cons of both sides.
Sure.
And it isn't, it isn't a matter of educating the public about why wind energy is bad. Or why mail-in voting is bad. Those are opinions, that is not an education. And, and I just want to hope that if you do table this, put a little more thought into it, give us more of a chance to have educated opinions and input. That you will make sure that you are not just presenting your side as an education. And that you realize that while there are pros and cons to both sides, there are experts on both sides and they need to weigh in. So that people really can make an educated vote. And so that they don't just vote on the bad things they've heard because they don't know about the good things or vice versa. That was what I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Good morning commissioners, it's good to see you, I'm Brett Cecil from Port Over Currie County. And I come to speak to you today because I've gotten some secondhand information as to what's going on in the county here. And the reason I find it important and imperative for me to speak here today is that I've declared my candidacy for state representative in this district, District One. So voting is an issue for me. I think changing the way that we vote in a, in one county, an entire district that maybe is made up of a number of counties. Think of something that would have to be considered maybe a little further down the line. I want to stick to the top level discussion that I thought this was about, and is whether or not all these issues should be put up as advisory questions on a ballot. I just want to encourage you to really take into consideration putting some of these questions out into the public. With the concern of creating undue expectations on the part of the public. Thinking that they might be voting on issues that they're going to expect that you do something for them about that. Bone being one of them. The tax levy definitely something you could have. But bone, I think, might be a little bit out of your realm. State or voting maneuvers, the way that we handle our, our elections, might be something that would be left for the state to handle. So really focusing on the things that you can make a difference in as county commissioners. So really focusing on the things that you can make a difference in as county commissioners. So I wanna thank you for being county commissioners. I know it's a tough job. And Commissioner Taylor, you and I met in twenty twenty-two when you were running your election, because I ran that year also.
Indeed, we did.
So hopefully, shall I prevail? We'll be working together. And Commissioner Mayne, it's a pleasure to meet you. This is the first time I've, I've been able to meet you in person. Commissioner Sweet and I met recently at a Hasidics workshop in Banden. So we've had some discussions around these, these things. But again, I just wanna encourage you to really focus on the things that you can make a difference in, and to not create undue expectations on the behalf of your county citizens and your voters on issues that they may not be able to do anything about, even though they can talk about it. A survey may be more appropriate. I don't know if it would be more expensive to do a survey rather than having these questions put on the ballot, which would, how would that weigh out? But the survey, I think you may have a better opportunity to engage with the public. Right?
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for that, Brett. It's nice to see you. Yes, good morning.
County Commissioners, Mayne, Taylor, thank you for um letting me speak. My name is Katie Eymann. I'm from Banden, Oregon. And um I just wanted to say that um in response to your initial comments, I've found that every legislator, every public official, um elected public official always makes time to listen to people. You're not the only level of public official that actually listens to people, and they all do. Um another one, but the main issue I have with these ballot measures is I think they're not properly uh prepared. You, you have a deadline, you're saying it's come up, you haven't even come up with the proper language. Um the, um the public has a right to uh hear what your discussion is before you vote. And just to say we're gonna go forward with this, but you haven't come up with the language that you're, um would put on the ballot, I think, is inappropriate. But mostly, I also think you need to take the time to uh let us know the cost of these and have a estimate of the cost of putting these measures on the ballot. Um because if there's extra voters pamphlet needs to happen. Um and then for each measure, there should be, so you should be informed about the cost of putting these on the ballot um in terms of the voting or the um, but also the measure itself for each of these measures, I recommend, and I would certainly hope that you would add the fiscal impact to the county of the adoption of these. Um uh what would be the fiscal impact, for instance, on, on the um, the voting by um in person and having a hand count? Uh what would be the cost to do that? So people, when they vote on these things, have an idea, they're fully educated, it's your responsibility if you're gonna put advisory vote out there uh to um find, tell, tell people what it would cost if you were to adopt this, because you're really voting on a policy issues, and most people vote for commissioners to make those policy decisions for them. We expect you to do the research, we expect you to do the education, and then make the decisions and, and act accordingly. Like, if you decide that wind energy is not a good idea, then you would do that. And if we don't, if the majority of the people don't like what you're doing, opposing it, then they can vote you out of office. That's the process to actually try to put out an advisory vote about how you should do your job is basically you're not doing your job. You're asking the voters to say, how should I do my job? Should I oppose wind energy, or should I not oppose wind energy? And it's your job to do that, and if we don't like what you're doing, then we can vote you out of office. As opposed to you, like, doing a poll, really all you're doing is an advisory vote is a poll of the people, and not giving people adequate education, what that's gonna cost us to get us the education um is a, a dereliction of your duty. You have a responsibility to act in what you consider to be the best interest of the public without asking us to make those decisions for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I lost track of if we had another hand up. I don't see one immediately. Do we have? Oh, uh I see NK Lane is back online. Shall we try that again, please? Oh, I see your mic is hot, NK.
I apologize. I had a call in the meantime. Um I'm Nancy Lane. I'm from Cusby, Oregon. I'm born and raised. I have a concern from the perspective of, I hear a lot about education. And my perspective is that most of us do not know how to educate ourselves because we're not taught how to educate ourselves in that perspective. So I recommend that people do a Freedom of Information Act request from the federal government, or from BoM, because that is, in fact, who is in charge of this operation. And with that information and asking pertinent, proper questions, you can get the data and the information that you require, but you have to do more than one. They will give you a generalization in the beginning, then you have to go deeper and deeper and deeper into getting the information and the education from them, as they're the organization that's proposing this process, basically. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have a hand in the room, and then we'll take uh Mike Okunisky next online. Please, Pam?
Is it still morning?
It is indeed, yes.
Pam Lewis, Kokial. Do I need to put three minutes on here?
Nope, we're, we're not running timer.
Okay, so what I want to address, please, is that thank you for doing this. I understand from past work sessions, you did not have to let the public even speak. You could have done your vote and ignored all of us, and you did not do that.
That is correct.
So.
No.
In direction of that, I wanna say thank you for beginning the process of changing how we lead. Your tip of the spear when you guys do this, you do it some, a little bit different. Uh you allow a great amount of interchange with people that will come. I have privately asked you early on in January to have some more town halls, et cetera. You've tried to do that. We've had small responses. Again, your tip of the spear in leadership in trying to change how you're communicating with your constituents, and I thank you. It'll be a fight. Stay the course. Make changes, give the input. I'm not against these inquiries. They're inquiries. They're not measures. They're not a law. You're not invoking anything. You're trying to get information from the public. I agree that we need to legal counsel the wording. And maybe it does need to be postponed and more educational pieces done. We tried to do an educational piece. We did not fill the room. Um perhaps we've evoked enough attention that now we would have some more town halls that are a little bit better in terms of response, you know, back and forth. Um I am on my way to worship leadership. I have to leave the building. I cannot stay for the entire day. I want to make a brief, if I have permission, comment on school choice. Should I not, or should I email you?
Uh please, go ahead. There's been, there's been enough other random comment, but that doesn't sound very random, like what, didn't mean to imply that.
Random. It was one of the inquiries that you wanted.
No. Exactly.
To, to address. Uh I apologize that I'm interrupting the course of this particular topic. But I love my county.
Yeah.
So I am, again, Pam Lewis from Kokial. I have two biological children and nine adopted. I have been a medic for thirty years, now retired, an ER nurse for, I don't know, fifteen years, and now retired. I've retired three times. I'm not very good at it. Um and I've served the county in taking care of patients who were affected with COVID and didn't want to go in the hospital. Worked hard at that. So I've served you. I'm just quietly doing, well, kinda quietly doing it uh behind the scenes in medicine. My children are who I'll die for. And then they're grown, but I've got grandchildren coming up. We are limited in our county, because we're small, to having uh choices for schooling. I have had and have an autistic child, a fetal alcohol child, attention deficit with hyperactivity, attention deficit without hyperactivity, dyslexic, uh cerebral palsy, lower IQ, high IQ, those are harder to raise. All of those, all of those dynamics made it incredibly difficult in this small county to educate my children. When it all came down and crumbled, I was able to stay home and homeschool them and catch them all up from two years of lag from the public education. I'm, I'm the biological, well, not biological, I am in my head. I'm the parent on my children's birth certificate. I should be able to make a choice for my child. I want to be able to have the money follow my children. Again, now grandchildren. Then, then our parents who are on the birth certificates can be making choices for the education in a restricted area where we have a couple of options and not too many, and maybe even um being able to assist with where that, how that education happens with that money following the child. I haven't heard anybody talk about that, and again, today's topic was not supposed to be that until later. But this is important that we let the parent determine the education for their children and their children's needs. My children's needs were not met, even though I had IEPs and five O'fords. I was having to go to the school every week to see that the teacher would follow it. That I had four teachers that didn't, so I polled my kids, and I homeschooled. I had the opportunity to do that. Today's culture makes it so that every member that's an adult in a household has to have a job or two in order to survive. So they can't homeschool their children. They, they, they need us to be able to support them in making the choices to where would the children go um for education. It also creates what I call a competition in that if the people move their children to another school, the public school will go, oh, maybe, maybe we should change what we're doing and provide better education. Unlike academics, they're not social situations being taught to my, my kids. Um I, I just wanted to remind us that it's gonna take different style of leadership, and I thank you for starting that and being that for our community. And it's, we have, we should have a right as a parent to send their kids where we want, to get the education that we desire for our children without being punished or restricted. And my name's on the birth certificate, so I should have a voice. Thank you so much. I'm on the road. I appreciate you guys a boatload. Thank you, sir. You and I have not met, but I appreciate your legal brain. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Drive safely. Okay, uh moving to online again, Mike Okunisky. Oh, okay. Uh hey, Mike, would you mind uh standing by for uh two minutes for a quick break?
Surely, no problem at all. Thank you.
We're gonna take a two-minute recess.
So um Commissioner Taylor has done a forum under my direction.
What?
Commissioner Taylor has done a candidate forum under my direction, and he can speak to you about.
Yeah.
You know, he has said publicly that he regarded that as fair, and he's, and he's. And I hope that, I think the forum is much more valuable than the current, the present. We can hold a candidate conference too, but we would rather have everybody. And I hope you will give us another chance, even though we've had a bad experience.
Tell, consult with my campaign manager, meaning my spouse of fifty-two years.
Okay, well, yeah, that's a better campaign manager than that.
She does all of my org star and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
She's a retired manager of the Ministry of Telecommunications company.
I belong to that. I think I belong to that union of what, communication.
Really?
It's America.
The what, man?
Communication.
Oh, yeah. So we did all uh telecommunications for the hospitals, your.
I was looking for CLA, and we're doing our organizing campaign with professional technical employees. We're only the sponsorship.
So I, I, you say the answer, thank you. It's good points. There'd be more inspiration.
All right.
Don't even know what I said.
We are back. We are back. I have order in the room, please.
Hello? They're having a good time chatting.
They are. All right. Thank you for all of that. Uh Mike Okunisky online, you are up. And uh hold on, your mic's not hot yet. There you go.
Uh first off, I'd like to say thank you for opportunity to uh comment. I do not live in the area, and I'm not gonna make any mention on the ballot or not on the ballot. But a couple of things for consideration, I think, for folks. I've been involved with uh the fishing industry now for about fifty-five years. Last twenty-some years has uh been involved more in management with Pacific Fishery Management Council and uh, I don't know, I won't list the other agencies and whatnot, but pretty heavily involved. Uh but the six years, last six years, I've been involved following BOM on the East Coast and the West Coast. Um made plenty of comments, including some down there at uh in Cusby. I did work in Cusby for a while and thought I was gonna run the plant down there for Pacific Seafood, and they moved me somewhere else. So I do have a little bit of a background, and I've got friends down there that give me a prize to what's going on, so it's just. I'm representing today the Pacific, excuse me, West Coast Platic Conservation Group. Our members um are, do have property and, and. Our members, um, are, do have property and, and do buy fish down there, uh, so I'll just make that point, we have a vested interest in that respect. Um, but first off, I'll say we are not anti-climate change. In fact, we support renewable energy in most forms. We do oppose offshore wind, and I'm going to just concentrate on a couple little issues that, and one is, is that I followed along where the development of, uh, jobs for the US contingency of, uh, folks is, and when we, when bone first came out and gave, uh, the verbal, or excuse me, the virtual meetings, they made all kinds of promises about jobs that would come up from offshore wind that would be located on the coastal areas. We question that is because it takes a lot of, um, serious infrastructure, heavy-duty infrastructure to support what they're doing in these ports. Manufacturer is a whole different game altogether. But I've followed what's happened in Puget Sound and also in the port of, um, Long Beach, California, and down in Humboldt Bay to some extent. Actually, I spent quite a few hours on it. But those three places, Puget Sound, Humboldt Bay, and the port of Long Beach, would appear to have enough capacity going forward, and they have programs going forward at this point. They're, they're not just getting started. They, the governor in Washington has, uh, got the Blue Wind Program, and then, uh, it's the Pure Wind Program in Port of Los Angeles. You can look those up on the internet. But the question is, is how many jobs are there going to be in Oregon in this case? And I, I, it, if you look at the logistics of what has to happen, Oregon is just more, well, just physically a poor choice. And I'm not saying it couldn't, can't, can't happen, but I think you need to find out specifically how that would happen before you get too wound up on where all the jobs are gonna be. Um, I, I certainly don't think it'd be in any coastal areas because these things, uh, have to draw about thirty-three to water, maybe more than that, and they're huge, taking them in and out of port, um, fully constructed. It's a nascent technology, uh, which never been in production before. I think there's four turbines or something, maybe one set of platforms going now back on the east coast, uh, but that's it. And I don't understand why, if the, there was a promise of all of these jobs, why we didn't get started with the onshore wind energy. There's some, last I looked a couple of years ago, was sixty-seven thousand onshore turbines. There was plenty of opportunity to get into the manufacturing with US companies, but there are some companies that manufacture, are owned primarily by off, uh, uh, international, uh, corporations, uh, and they're run under, uh, limited, uh, liability corporations in the US, which is what they will do in these wind farms. Each one will have its own limited liability. So I just would say that it probably pays to dig a little bit deeper before everybody just assumes that there's going to be these jobs and find out exactly what will happen. I'm, if we're gonna do it, and I oppose wind ener, offshore wind energy, it, but if they are gonna do it, it should be done as much manufacturing and jobs in the United States as possible. I just don't wanna see that disappear, uh, in some rush or something, 'cause right now you can see the blades going up the Columbia River continuously. I lived there for a while, or stayed there for a while from time to time, and you can see those ships going up the river with those blades, which are getting bigger and bigger even on shore. But this is, uh, our primary concerns are just, is fishing, of course, displacement of fishing is the first obvious one, but it's also the environment. There's so much that, in the way of data gaps, it has not happened yet as far as research, and it's not going to happen because it gets in the way of bones expedite, expediting this thing to a quick settlement and getting it on the ground or on the water. So, um, there's a lot to do, pay attention to, and it, it's not a quick, anyway, I'll let it go with that.
Thank you very much for those comments, Mr. Okunisky. We're, that's, you know, frankly, a, a little bit off topic because we're not talking about wind energy specifically, we're talking about the, the ballot question, but we do appreciate your input, and I'm sure it will be valuable as we, uh, move forward to whatever degree we do with discussions, uh, at a later date concerning wind energy specifically and whether or not, uh, we want it here in Coos County, but thank you for your comments.
I've got plenty of friends that'll echo what I said, so thank you.
Thank you, all right. Okay, did we have anybody else in the room who would like to weigh in at this juncture? Commissioner Maine, do you have a, uh, do you have a motion in mind that you would wish to, uh, entertain?
Well, after listening to folks and, and especially the fishermen who are deeply affected by this, and thinking about the other two measures, I would move that we table this until a later date, and hopefully we can educate more of the public on all of these issues, especially the, the both fishermen groups that were here, uh, were afraid that we're gonna have a vote that people voting that aren't informed about all the issues. And I think that other points were made that, uh, have, if you don't know, we've started this county website release every couple of weeks about what's going on in the county. Invite people pro and against the wind, pro and against, uh, vote by mail versus in-person voting, and also the issue of, uh, school vouchers, 'cause I don't know a whole lot about school vouchers. Um, and try and educate folks that way and try and get it in our media. Um, I'd probably think that Gold Meadows would come down and do interviews for and against each of these issues, as well as our local newspapers and any other media, like, uh, Mr. Taylor has, uh, blogs and other folks and.
There'll be Rob Taylor.
R O B Taylor versus R O D Taylor, which was a huge confusion.
Oh, it's, it continues, believe me.
A couple of years ago was very huge. Um, try and get, and it's really difficult process to try and get the general public in Coos County at least aware, I wouldn't say educated, but aware of what the ninety-thousand-foot level issues are. They're not gonna delve into the weeds like I have or Carrie have delved into this offshore wind stuff. Um, it is hugely involved, and there's so many aspects of this whole offshore wind thing that it takes an exorbitant amount of time, and I even have a researcher doing extensive research for the last few years on the offshore wind, which is my spouse of fifty-two years, who was a, is a retired network administrator for a telecommunications company, and she's well versed in all kinds of computer things, thank goodness. But I would, uh, entertain that we not go forward at this time to putting all this on the ballot, even though I have really strong opinions about all three of these, I think. I'm not real educated on at least one of them, but, um, try and educate instead of trying to get this done before next week, and I know Commissioner Taylor and Commissioner Sweet are both gone at different times next week, so we, we really don't have any agenda items for next week because they're not both here, which means I get to run amok all over the place, tongue-in-cheek. Uh, but, uh, let's, uh, try and, try and, uh, do some more education and get both sides involved, and I know we've had multiple, um, discussions here in this room about wind energy. We had a public forum at the Sawdust Theater one night where there was probably roughly forty people there. Uh, it's really, really good that we had a lot of people last Tuesday as well as this morning. Generally don't have but half a dozen people show up at anything. I mean, when we've had town halls around the county, starting in Lakeside, Coos Bay, North Bend, and Coquille, Merle Point, Abandoning Powers, most people show up is in Lakeside and Powers, about maybe seven or eight of them. You go to Coos Bay and there's three people, and you're going, what are they all doing? I mean, you can't all be watching Dancing With The Stars, kind of thing. Aren't they interested in what's going on and, and how their lives are being affected by all kinds of things going on, not on the county level, but the state level and the federal level? 'Cause we track all of that stuff, and we're involved in all kinds of things. I'm on three or four statewide committees, four, I guess, and three were appointed by the governor's office and the senate, but, um, we are involved in a lot of different things, and I'd like to have people know what we're doing and express an opinion about it.
So, so, uh, so.
Website that you can be notified.
Sure. So, all right. Um, so I'm sure there wasn't an actual timer running, but we should flag the tape because I'm certain that that is the longest motion I've ever heard in my life.
Thank you. You can stop any time.
I hold the record, yes. All right, so, uh, uh.
Maybe restate the motion.
I would, I would, yeah, I would say we table these three items until, um, late summer, next fall. Uh, I know that two of them aren't within our purview, it's only public opinion, uh, but the wind energy can't, can be within our opinions. So I'm, I move to, to table all three items, period.
Commissioner Maine makes a motion to table all three items. I, I second the motion and, uh, and open that motion for a moment of discussion. I will, I will comment that, uh, today's, today's interchange has been, uh, peaceable, respectful, thank you all, those of you who are still here, uh, for that. Um, and, uh, I think it's been, uh, enlightening, uh, you know, a, a dispassionate, discursive debate on relevant issues instructs us all, and a rising tide lifts all boats. So, um, you know, I, I, I do believe that there have been some, some very valid points made here today, particularly, uh, in relation to, uh, uh, proper voter education for an informed electorate making decisions on these advisory questions. Um, I think that there is a, a tremendous amount of misunderstanding and misinformation about what this was about, but, um, nonetheless, I think that that additional time will give us, uh, an opportunity to engage that further, uh, further educational discourse and, um, have a, a, a better process going forward. And additionally, I think the, the more important thing, really, uh, I, I think I've had during this meeting a change of heart as to how these matters here might clutter and confuse regarding the levy question, and, uh, you know, I do not want that to be the case. So, um, so with that said.
Please don't go away yet, I have a request.
We have, okay, so we do have, so this is, this is the discussion portion on our motion specifically. So if your request is germane to the motion that's on the floor right now, then I'll entertain those comments at the microphone, please.
It, it is because. I just wanna know where we can find out where you have these meetings.
You just get to the microphone, and sorry, we have to have it.
Yeah, I, I was in theater, I don't need it. Uh, where do you post these meetings? I, I think the reason we had such a huge, uh, turnout is because somebody went on Facebook and said, hey, guys, look what's happening. Not everyone's on Facebook, and I'm wondering where you post meetings so that we can make sure that only six people don't show up.
All right, let's do this right now for the benefit of the room.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, my screen is shared up here, and I am right now navigating to the Coos County homepage. And there it is, that's the homepage for the county website, all right? And I'm trying to get, you can see I have forty-eight dozen tabs open. All right, so right, right here on this, this left-hand area where my mouse pointer is, you'll see View Calendar. You'll also see up here a week of two twenty-six, twenty-four meeting notice, okay? You can click on that meeting notice link right there. This brings up, uh, oh, that's actually the meeting notice PDF, yeah, so I need to click on the calendar, right, Bobby?
No, you can just click on the.
Oh, click on the meeting notice link? Okay, so that meeting notice link right there, uh, uh, says there are no meetings scheduled for this week, which is, which is next, next week, right? Uh, so you could see that, um.
So she posts the meeting notice for the week, and then she posts individual meetings.
Individual meetings would go on that link, so, but that.
You're right on the calendar.
That's, that's the link right there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
While you're out there, somebody ask about the newsletter, that banner across the top?
Yeah.
You click on that, that'll take you to the place where you can sign up for the newsletter.
This, this orange banner at the top of the page, you see my pointer moving back and forth there, that is where you can subscribe to the newsletter, and, uh, hope that answers all those questions. Okay, we have a.
Will you also click on the View Calendar button there?
Yeah.
That's another way of looking at the meetings.
It is another way. This View Calendar link right here, if you can all see me, this is that, that green button I'm on there. I'm gonna click on that, and that brings up the calendar and gives you a graphic illustration or view of all the meetings laid out, and if you click, each one of these meetings is a link that provides the documents related to that meeting, all right? Okay, we have a motion and a second, we have, uh, more discussion.
I just wanna thank you commissioners, again, Carrie Silva.
Thank you, Carrie.
For tabling it at a, for a later date. I'm not saying it shouldn't be on the ballot.
Mm-hmm.
I just think there needs to be more education, and I appreciate the table. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Is there anybody else in the room that has discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Abigail, please.
Abigail Locke, resident of Coos Bay, um, since we've opened it to all three of the measures, I just wanted to say briefly that in the process of education, I think education around voting methods is especially important. As a government nerd and a person who's worked for a quarter century either as a poll worker or as an election table worker, um, I think it's, there is a dearth of reliable information about how elections are actually run. Uh, we do fortunately have experts in the subject, in the county clerk and in elections officials from around the county, around the state and, uh, around the nation, and, um, there is so much misinformation on social media and so many just pronouncements that have no basis about election methods everywhere, that that is a, that's kind of a foundationally important area where education would be really important. Um, I think, uh, I think Commissioner Taylor summed up the, um, consensus in the room admirably today when he said an uninformed opinion is of significantly less value than an informed one, and, um, I hope that, um, you, we will all do the work, and, uh, certainly the League of Women Voters is prepared. And certainly the League of Women Voters is prepared to help with that work as much as we can of educating before these measures are put to, to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the room?
Hi, I'm Debbie Heller, retired county clerk, and I live in the Myrtle Point area. Since elections was brought up, and that's of course why I'm here. I think when you're evaluating whether or not to put that advisory vote to the ballot, whenever you decide you may or may not do that. Remember that the voters did vote that, I believe, November in the general election in nineteen ninety-eight to move to vote by mail. I'm probably one of the few people left that worked in elections when it was voting at the polls. And I can guarantee you, you lose control of the election. You can train the people, we did. I was not a county full-time employee, I was extra help. But I'm the one that packed the boxes and the ballots and the supplies that went out to the polling locations. Those polling locations, we did bring the people in. It's very hard to find workers. And it's even getting, I'm sure, harder than it was back then, I started in nineteen ninety-five. And you would pack those supplies, they'd be verified by another worker that everything was there, for instance. You would get calls during the election day, because they're only there on election day, saying we ran out of ballots, or you don't have this, or you don't have that. A person would have to run out there to the polling location panicked because they should have had all their ballots. But with a quick training that you do, you don't have experts working at this. I mean, yes, most of them are politically active is why they want to be involved in the election process. But they maybe gave out all of the Democratic ballots, for instance. They just didn't notice that there was two great big boxes of stuff. If you remember those black boxes that we used to drop our ballots in. They didn't open them both, so they just gave out the ballots in the first one until they ran out. So if you were a Republican, you didn't have your candidates on the ballot. Okay? There's, I mean, there's so many things. You can vote, you can purchase a voter registration list, that's public information. So if you were voting by polls nowadays, I believe it's federally against law to show photo ID. You've got a polling book, you could have that list and I could walk up and say, hey, I'm Debbie Heller and give my address because it was on that voter list. Then you, they'd hand you a ballot, you'd vote it and you'd drop it in the box. No one would know anything different. You could go to the next polling location and say, you know, I'm Bob Maine, I live at this address. They'd say, okay, that's here. You'd sign, you do sign, you'd hand the ballot to them, they'd vote it. Those signatures are never verified. Those were never verified, all you did was give the people voting history because you stated your name and your address. I mean, there's so many complications that arose during those polling locations. So education to the voters to realize that it's not gonna be the perfect election that a person may think by voting at the polls. Myself, I rarely voted. I had small children back then, my husband worked late. If I was able to get to the polling place on election day by eight, I voted. Otherwise, I didn't, you know. Once I went to vote by mail, I doubt if I ever missed one. So I mean, education and actually knowing the history and what it all involves and the inaccuracy that you're gonna find by losing that control of the experts that have been trained in your offices is huge.
Thank you.
Julie Reckie, county clerk. First of all, I wanted to just speak to the same point that Debbie's speaking to. I think it's very important that we note that the elections are, the rule of the elections is, is done by the Secretary of State's office. So the hand counting, the voting in person, the showing ID, all of that is determined by rule of the Secretary of State's office. They have the authority over that portion of the elections. So by, by sending a question to the voters in this way, it is very misleading. Because what it implies is that we can actually make these changes. And I'm telling you, we cannot. And if we do, we will be in litigation, which will be costly. So I think it's very important that we understand that, as one case in point. The second case in point is there have been lots of misinformation in the public about the way elections are run and about whether they are run in a way that is non-bias and fair and accurate. None of them have been founded. There have been court cases. Lots of people come in and tell me that so-and-so told them something. Never has anyone provided any proof of these things. We clear our voter rolls daily and there are many methods we use in which to do that, including obituaries and, and information from the state and ERIC and all kinds of things to help us clear our voter rolls daily. I have grave concern that if we lean into this misinformation, we are causing public fear that is unnecessary. And that leads to putting our election workers in danger. Especially in a very big election year. I would also say as far as public education goes, observing the elections is part of the process. Going on to the website, you can go to the county clerk's section of the website. You can fill out the forms to be an observer, you can come, you can watch the process. I'm telling you now, we have many checks and balances, more than we're even required to do. My workers care about a free and fair election. And the procedure that we use is one that allows for that. And you as citizens can sign up and observe that process. And you know what, today, we had certification for the Lakeside election that's happening. You know how many people showed up for that? It's published? None. So it's really hard for me to hear about all these inaccuracies and then not have anyone show up to be educated. As far as people observing during the actual ballot process, when we have a smaller election, such as special districts or recall elections like we just had in Lakeside, we get maybe one or two people that show up to observe. If citizens were that concerned, it feels like they would be there during those times too. In fact, you would have more time to observe and ask questions because there would be less people there. So, I hear a lot of negative about the election process without a lot of actual participation. Please find the actual facts, not just what someone told you. Not just what, what you've maybe just read on one thing you clicked on on the internet. Do the research and when you find something that is truly unfactual, I would love to see it. Bring it to me. I will present it to the Secretary of State's office, I will be an advocate. But until I see that, the disparaging of our election office is just doing us all a disservice. And quite frankly, it is making people fearful, not just the election workers, but people going to vote. And it, it really needs to stop.
So for the record, I would like to read from this SEL eight oh five form regarding the Voting Reform Advisory Vote. In the summary statement, it says, "State law currently dictates that elections are to be conducted by mail. This advisory vote does not change any laws governing elections. A statewide ballot measure would be needed for this. This advisory vote will only inform Coos County Commissioners to determine whether voters wish for them to advocate for the changes listed." So that was, that was made very clear.
So we haven't gotten a chance to read that new one, so I wouldn't have been able to see that. But I will say this, I understand that it is just a question about what the voters would like to see happen on your end. But my, my question to you is, what would that actually look like? Because, because I don't think the voters will understand that on a county level, we cannot make this change. And by putting this advisory question forward, it very much implies that you can make that change. And I think that that, if you're, if you want to put the advisory question forward, of course, that's, that's your decision. But don't mislead the voters in what that actually means you can do.
Would never participate in that kind of a misleading. I'm sorry, actually, Abigail was up next. And then it looks like Mrs. Heller would like to speak again. And then Teresa, and then we're gonna call it, we're gonna call the vote after that, and that's the end of it.
So, I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna get into the weeds, but following on the county clerk's comments, I did want to say a couple more things. I am one of the people who has worked under the current Oregon system and I have also worked under vote in person over a quarter century, as I mentioned. I can think of four or five ways that if I were determined and reckless enough, I could move the needle on an election that was in person and hand counted. I consider such elections far more insecure than our system here. I would be stumped if I wanted to, you know, jigger an election, I'd be stumped in how to do it in Oregon. And I think that education about the step-by-step process, you can actually, there's a video that was done, I think, out of Multnomah County that's step-by-step through the process of how ballots are processed and counted in Oregon. It's tremendously valuable. I, I had to mention one piece of misinformation that came out during the course of this meeting. There was a reference to ballots that came in up to a week after election day with no postmark. So I worked the last election in Coos County and I asked, did, did ballots come in without a postmark after the election and where they counted? And I was told there were seven and that they were not counted because they did not have postmarks on them. Ballots come in after election day for a variety of reasons, including military serving overseas. And the provision of that extra week for ballots to come in that have been, that have been mailed by election day is an important accommodation for ballots that come from afar. And just very briefly, the whole thing about stuffing ballot boxes, every single return envelope that contains a ballot has a unique identifier on it that identifies that ballot as belonging to a particular voter. It also requires a signature. And the signature has to match the signature on file of that individual voter. So if somebody was stuffing random ballot envelopes that looked like ballot envelopes into a ballot box, those could not be counted because they would not match the list of voters and the, the signatures of those voters. This is the kind of information that is so prevalent and rarely gets answered. And I really think there needs to be a systematic effort to counter all of those types of misinformation and get the real procedure out there. I, I believe there may be security measures that, that county clerks are asked to keep close hold. But there are enough that are public, publicly available and that, that you can tell the public to vastly increase the security of our elections. And as somebody who, you know, goes out there and goes through the metal detectors and, you know, hears the threats and all that stuff for minimum wage, I'd really appreciate it if that were done. Thank you.
Thank you.
So in regards to the way the advisory summary is worded, it, for me reading it, would give me the impression that the Secretary of State is the one that set the law to be vote by mail. Again, that's misleading and if you happen to not be a fan of the Secretary of State, then that could waive the way you feel on something like this. The people voted in vote by mail. So I think that would need to be clarified that, you know, it was approved by the voters in Oregon to be vote by mail, not the Secretary of State.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate all the work that the clerks do. I was involved one, one election cycle with a hand recount. It was when Terry Turry was still working there and I was deeply impressed with the thoroughness and the carefulness of counting those ballots. This was all hand counted and there were numerous, there, there was numerous oversight. And this question is really important because, and I understand what they're saying, they're saying, well, we don't want people to question things because then we're gonna feel unsafe. But we do need to look at, look at the whole matter. And I think these discussions and also if we do at some point put it up for an advisory are important because in the, we're talking about both sides of the aisle. Amy Klobuchar, along with others on one side of the aisle said that the machines are not secure. And then you've got the other side where you've got people saying the machines are not secure. And I heard recently, and this is probably one of those, I heard this, but as far as I understand, this was a court case where the machine was actually manipulated with just a pen. So we, we do need to feel like they're secure, but we do need to be able to talk about these things and look into, the, the vote by mail was established many years ago and lots of things have changed. So I, I believe that, that this discussion is really, really important. I personally really disliked it when they extended the voting beyond election day. In particular, I would love to see that end. It's almost embarrassing to me if we ever had a presidential election and it ended up with just a few votes and, but Oregon's votes haven't come in yet and everybody'd be waiting for, I would be so. and would everybody be waiting for, I would be so embarrassed. I would love to get back to at least having, uh, uh, us know who won on election day or very, very shortly thereafter. Thank you so much, uh, commissioners.
Okay, that's the end of the public comments right now. I am, uh, I do want to correct one issue on the record.
But there's one more.
You know, I did say that I was gonna cut it off after Teresa, because we gotta end this at some point. It's like, I mean, it's, it's almost noon, I just want to correct one issue on the record, and that is that I have, I have said publicly, and will continue to say publicly, that I believe that our Coos County Elections Department is, uh, is doing a, a good job with integrity. I've never disparaged our, uh, our county clerk, uh, nor her staff. Would not do that. Okay, we have a first and a second to table these, uh, table these initiatives until, uh, the fall election. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Alright.
So, thank you all, this is what, almost three, a little over three hours? Last night, we had a two-and-a-half hour meeting from six-thirty to nine o'clock.
And now we are adjourned, thank you.